We're on now?
Yep.
All right. Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Kelly Mitchell, and I’m the Chair of the Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission. It’s now a few minutes after 1:00, and the December 16, 2021, public hearing is called to order. I think I’m hearing some feedback. Does somebody have a...have sound on their laptop? No? Okay. All right. So this hearing is taking place in the Minnesota State Capitol Building, Room G3, at 75 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, St. Paul, Minnesota. I’m here along with Commissioners Middlebrook, Commissioner Schnell, Commissioner Marath, here participating in person at the Capitol. And online, we have Commissioner Knudsen, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Lad, Commissioner Larkin, Commissioner Estrada, and Commissioner Lakey. I think I got everybody.
Commissioner Hansey.
Commissioner Hansey. Yes, thank you. And Commissioner Hansey. This public hearing has a remote access option by telephone or interactive technology, and instructions for remote participation have been posted on our website at mn.gov backslash sentencing guidelines slash meetings. And as I mentioned, some of our commissioners are participating by telephone or interactive technology. The public hearing is being held to consider a proposal to amend Sections 2B and 8 of the Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines and Commentary, as well as Comment 2A01. The proposed changes include the repeal of Sections 2B-2, custody status at the time of the offense, as well as conforming and clarifying changes. The specified effective date of all proposed modifications is August 1, 2022. You may access a complete copy of the proposed modifications on our website at mn.gov/sentencing-guidelines-meetings. These have been available on the website since November 15, 2021, the same day the notice of this hearing was published in the State Register. There are a limited number of public inspection copies available in this room, together with the website access information. So if you wish, you may make oral or written statements today regarding the proposed modifications. You may also address questions about the proposed modifications to the commission, its staff, or witnesses, and if you make an oral statement, the commission or its staff may ask questions of you. Members of the public who registered to testify before today will be called first in the order that they registered. If you would like to testify about the proposed modifications today, and you have not yet registered, you must first register your name, address, telephone number, and the names of any individuals or associations that you represent in connection with the hearing. If you are here in person, please sign in with the staff now by the signs reading “Signs to Testify.” And I’m not sure, are those located in the back of the room? Over here, right over here. So if you are here and you want to testify but you haven’t yet signed up, please come on over and sign in to do that. If you are attending remotely, and you have not yet signed up to testify but wish to do so, please email your registration information to staff@sentencingguidelines@state.mn.us. Please do that right away. You will then receive the meeting access information. If you have any trouble, you can call our staff at 651-296-0144. After everyone has testified, the public hearing will end. The commission will hold the record open for five calendar days after today to accept additional written comments. The commission will give due consideration to all written comments received within the five-day comment period, as well as all written comments that have been received up to now. The commission will next meet on Thursday, January 13, at 1:00 p.m., to finally adopt or reject this proposal. The meeting will take place in this room, Capitol Room G3, with remote access optional. How many people do we have registered to testify today?
Approximately 30 so far, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have about 30 people to testify today. Because we do have a large number of people, I’m going to impose a time limit of five minutes, so if we reach the five-minute mark, we’ll cut you off. But you are definitely welcome to submit anything additional in writing, so please don’t feel like we are not here to listen to everything you have to say. We definitely want to hear what you have to say. One other thing that I want to make clear, it’s come to my attention, that between the last meeting and today, a number of personal attacks have been made against members of this commission. And I want to remind everybody that what we are here today to talk about is a policy change. We can disagree about what that policy change should be, reasonable minds may differ, and that’s okay. We’re here to listen to you today, to hear your views on what the policy should be. But I would ask you to keep your remarks focused on the policy, and to refrain from making any personal attacks today. All right. With that, I’m going to turn it over to staff, and they’re going to call on the first testifier. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The order of testifiers will be on the screen. If you can read it, it’s a little bit small, as will the...as will the time limit. The first testifier is Dean Brown. He’ll be testifying in person.
Are you going to be able to say whether that person’s here or on WebEx? Or expected to be here?
Dean Brown testified...signed up to testify in person.
So is Dean Brown here? Okay, I’m not seeing Dean Brown. So we’ll go on to the next person, and we’ll come back to him if he shows up.
All right. The next person, Madam Chair, who signed up to testify remotely, is John Euler.
John Euler? Are you here?
Remote, yes.
John Euler, if you’re here, please unmute and go ahead. Or John Euler?
He’s unmuted, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead. Okay, well, we seem to have some technical difficulty, so let’s keep moving, and then perhaps...what?
Well, I’m just wondering if we could do a test of...would any commission member on the WebEx call...I’ll pick on you, Judge Knudsen. Can you please unmute yourself and just speak into the microphone and make sure we can hear you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Yep, you’re a little soft, but we can certainly hear you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So John Euler, are you online?
John Euler is online.
Can you unmute?
So please go ahead with your statement.
Am I on, and can you hear me?
Yes.
All my apologies, I have no audio, so I’m so sorry. Well, shall I commence? Okay, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you all from my 11 years of clinical forensic experience. Actually, I have more now, working with the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections Office, since retired from that institution back in 2016. I was hired to start the nation’s first intensive treatment program in long-term solitary confinement, and from that time, I accrued more clinical contact hours than any other prison psychology staff member in the U.S. or Canada. I oversaw the treatment and served as lead therapist for one of the Department of Corrections specialized forensic sex offender units for men who were high-risk and designated as sexually violent predators, and were certified from a specialized training from Dr. Robert Hare in the TCLR. I have conducted hundreds of sex offender parole evaluations. I’m certified in the Static 99. I’ve also headed up treatment for the institution’s mental health units, dual diagnosis programs, and programs for veterans. I’m a licensed professional counselor, and I run websites, survivorssupport.net, churchprotect.org, and have a weekly podcast, Journey Through Healing, and I’m a certified sex offender treatment provider here in South Carolina. The reason why I appear on your screen from the U.S. is I was invited by the Child Protection League to give my thoughts, to begin to help provide additional information. I watched your meeting from November 4, and was very heartened by the thoughtful consideration that you all gave, and I just thought, in the brief time that I would share with you my concerns, as a treatment provider in the community now, having provided years’ worth of sex offender treatment to high- and low-intensity sex offenders, that to do what is being proposed for this particular population, I think is very dangerous. As a sex offender treatment provider, to lower a point removes a very important piece of treatment, which is a stick. I’m all about rehabilitation, that is what I do. But with the sex offender population in particular, you’re dealing with a population that is known to be very adept at manipulation, and you need as many objective indicators and criteria by which you can see how they’re doing as possible. And to go easy on these men will make it more difficult, because by nature, they tend to play on the edge. So if you want to balance criminal justice reform with public safety, I would say, at the very least carve out for the issue of sex offenders, as far as this population, do not make it easier for them. Do not lower the sentencing structure as far as if they violate on probation. No sex offender, all things being equal, no sex offender violates by accident. In terms of failure to register, I noted on the...that heat diagram, as it were, that that became one of the primary focuses as far as men violating on parole. None of these men failed to register by accident. In the institution, they tend to be, some of them, more fastidious in terms of detail, so they know how to do that. And the greatest concern is this: with the number-one risk assessment instrument that is used to determine level of risk, high versus low, that is the Static 99, it is terribly flawed when it comes to pedophiles. It gives additional points, as it were, to those that fit within that category, and I did my own research in there while I had access to all the files in the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. And what I found was, among the population designated by judges as sexually violent predators, the Static 99 scored those men 75% of the time as low-risk. That is crucial to understand, because if someone then, on paper, lets go risk, and they’re out in the community, and they failed to register, they’re already giving indications they are playing on the edge. So I would...I would heartily recommend that if you are going to lower things by a point, at the very least, you carve out something about sex offenders that does not allow men to get off easier, has to do with violating on parole. I appreciate it so much. My apologies that I can’t get my audio running. I can make myself available at any time for further questions and answers. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Does any member of the commission have a question before we move on? Okay. With that, go ahead.
The next testifier is Will Cooley.
You want us right here?
Yes, please.
All right. Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Will Cooley, and I represent Decarcerate, Minnesota. We support the proposal to eliminate custody status from criminal history scores. Most people penalized by this point are convicted of low-level drug and property crimes. The emphasis on incarcerating these offenders and inattention to solving violent crimes is a major source of criminal justice dysfunction in this country. In and around 1969, police forces across the country stepped up narcotics enforcement. The results were predictably disappointing. A severe rise in arrests and jailings had no effect on drug use. As one police official said, “The use of illegal drugs is almost completely a medical problem, which the police are unable to handle, but until the public comes around to this fact, we’ll continue to go through the motions.” Since then, thoughtful law enforcement officials have repeated this sentiment, but we have ignored them. The consequences have been tragic. Last year, 100,000 people died of drug overdoses, an unprecedented milestone that no amount of imprisonment or tough-on-crime policies can address. Minnesota saw overdoses rise 39%, while nationally, drug overdoses now surpass deaths from car crashes, guns, and even flu and pneumonia. Imprisoning drug users increases the likelihood of premature death. As one study showed, in the two weeks following the release of people incarcerated in state prisons, they were 120 times more likely to die from an overdose compared to the general public. While we have poured countless criminal justice resources into the health problem of addiction, we have neglected the primary function of law enforcement: solving violent crimes. Clearance rates for homicide, for example, have been dropping for years. In Minneapolis, fewer than half of all murders are solved. A local publication recently ran the headline, “If you shoot someone, you’ll probably get away with it,” as eight in 10 shootings do not result in an arrest. When people who commit violent crimes are not held accountable, we lose faith in the legitimacy of the criminal justice system, and it causes cycles of retribution. This is especially true in minority communities, as the drop in solving murders has been most pronounced when the victim is African-American. By approving this proposal, the Sentencing Guideline Commission can begin the process of focusing our valuable resources on what the criminal justice system can and should do: solving violent crimes. It also reinforces what intelligent law enforcement officials have been telling us for decades. “The use of illegal drugs is almost completely a medical problem, which the police are unable to handle.” Eight in 10 shootings unsolved, 100,000 overdose deaths. We can and must do better. Pass this change, and then let’s get down to the business of saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Larkin...Commissioner Larkin has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. I appreciate your comments. Based on your comments, I have to ask, do you support this proposal for all offenders...
Commissioner Larkin, just hang on one sec. We’re really having trouble hearing you here. Is there anything you can do about this?
Let me see if I can help.
Okay. Oh, you’re going to put on your headphones, so that might be helpful, yeah.
Going to land the plane here. Just give me a sec.
I think when she does this, it’ll help.
Is that better?
Yes, very much so. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cooley. From your comments, I just want to ask, do you support this proposal for all offenders and all offenses, or do you mainly support it for low-level drug offenders, which is the population you discussed?
Mr. Cooley...
We support it for all offenders. We do not believe in carve-outs. If you look at the data, it’s quite clear that this applies to low-level drug and property offenders.
I understand that, but would carving those offenders out satisfy your concerns? How would it not?
Again, this is kind of a...as we’ve talked about before, it’s kind of a double jeopardy situation here, right? We already take these things into account. Let’s focus on what the criminal justice system should do, and that is solving violent crimes, which it’s clearly not doing right now, right? And let’s...let drug problems be a public health problem.
What about sex offender problems?
What about them?
No additional questions.
We’ll move on to...thank you very much, Mr. Cooley. We’ll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier is Senator Warren Limer.
Thank you. Please proceed. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. The last time I was before you, I gave some recommendations regarding Commissioner Schnell’s introduction of capping probation limits to five years. Now we’re back again on a new modification, and you’re seeking advice. I opened my comments last time by stating, how does it feel to be a de facto legislator? Because after all, the decisions you make with the makeup of the legislature now, you will be writing or changing existing state law. Despite the fact that you don’t have an election certificate, the difference between you and I when we make public policy decisions is that I, as a legislator, are accountable to the public. I have an election, that I have to justify my decisions during my legislative term, and you do not. You have a little bit more flexibility, but nevertheless, we, as a state, have to live with your decision. And the public really doesn’t have a lot to say, except for those who come to this microphone during these few days. One of the references that I wanted to come here to you today was that I wanted to address this issue, and I’m very concerned about it. During the course of the discussions that we’ve had, the comments that I’ve heard in the newspapers, the background that’s going on in the public, I hope we’re not tone-deaf to what’s really happening to our citizens in Minnesota. We are experiencing record increases in violent crime, in theft of cars, in hijackings. It’s spreading...it was started kind of in the urban cores of our cities, and now it’s spreading into suburbs, as well as population centers around the state. This proposal seems to be, to me, going in the direction of going soft on crime, and I’m concerned about that. I’m concerned about it because, quite honestly, we have a number of things happening, and it’s not just a short-term spike in crime. I wanted to read to you a few statistics of what’s been going on in the year 2020, and these statistics are coming from the BCA. They do an annual report. Minnesota recorded over a 16% increase in violent crime in 2020. 185 murders in 2020 in Minnesota compared to 117 the year before. That’s 58% increase. We have a rising criminal tide in this country, and it’s right here in Minnesota as well. And I’m rather surprised we’re having a discussion about limiting and lessening the criminal sentences on criminals at the very same time that our public is suffering from the hands of those who want to persecute them on the streets of our innocent citizens. Motor vehicle theft rose 19% in 2020, and we know for a fact that it’s exceeding that this year. Reports of robberies were up 26%. Aggravated assaults increased 22%. The value of property stolen topped $216 million, 54% increase. And the report on assaults on police officers increased by 62%. And yet, we have a discussion following your previous discussion about shortening probation times down to a maximum five years, and now we’re going one more step and lessening the point system on those who had committed a crime while they’re on probation. We call it probation for a reason. It’s a time period to test whether or not a felon who has been released from prison has the fortitude to be crime-free during that probation time. And if they commit a crime during that time, then the courts have an opportunity to respond. They have an opportunity to respond through hearings, through charges. You could send them back to prison. We allow a certain degree of discretion on the part of a judge, and that half a point system is directly tied with that discretionary power.
Senator Limer, I’m going to have to ask you to wrap up. You’ve hit your five minutes.
My comments are almost done, Madam Chair. Thank you for that opportunity. The justification...the only justification I have heard is that’s going to save money. Commissioner Shell made a comment in the local newspaper, $630 million. I have to remind people that this would potentially free up 536 prison beds, 536 prisoners, instead of being in prison, would be on the streets in Minnesota. And I think that’s vitally important for us to realize: if they’re not in prison, they’re going to be in a neighborhood near you, and they’re going to be released early. I think that’s vitally important for the public to understand that, and I hope, with all sincerity, that you reconsider this proposal and not allow it to continue. This is not the time for criminal justice gone wild. This is a time when we protect the public safety of our citizens.
Senator Limer, I have a question for you. Would you agree with our longstanding principle in Minnesota that we want to reserve our prison space for the more serious criminal offenses? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, since about 1980, the state of Minnesota has reduced its prison sentences quite a bit. We don’t rely on prison as other states do. We rely on probation. And because of that, historically, our probation periods have been slightly longer periods of time on that supervised release period in a felon’s life, because first, it...
Well, I’m not...I’m sorry. I don’t mean to interrupt, but I’m not asking about probation terms. I’m just asking the question if you agree with the policy that we’ve long had, that our prisons are reserved for more serious offenses?
Madam Chair, I do agree with the current policy of the state of Minnesota, limiting prison sentences to those who are the very worst, the ones who are the most threatening to the public. I’m concerned that we may be lessening those criminal sentences for those very same felons.
Have you reviewed the research that the commission has produced that shows that most people who are receiving the custody status point are actually low-level drug and property offenders, not the people that we typically want to use our prisons for?
Madam Chair, it’s my understanding, if you would reduce that half point, it causes a ripple effect through your grid, and that ripple effect reduces criminal sentences across the board. I’m concerned about that.
Thank you. Does any other commission member have a question? Commissioner Estrada?
Thank you, Senator, for your comments. I think...you know, I think I speak for the whole commission here in that, you know, public safety, we do have public safety at the forefront of our mind, and, you know, the statistics that you threw out about violent crime is not surprising. My question to you is, are you aware that this commission passed enhancement for repeat severe violent offenders in 2019, increasing sentences for repeat violent...severe violent offenders by 12 months, 18 months, and 24 months? And that would remain...that would remain despite this change, should it take effect?
So it looks like Senator Limer was having...we’re having a little difficulty hearing you here, so I’ll repeat the question. What she asked was, are you aware that this commission did enact a severe violent offender enhancement in 2019 that increases sentences by 12, 18, or 24 months for people who have repeat violent offenses? And that remains in place after this?
I vaguely remember that, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. We’ll move on to the next testifier.
Madam Chair, the next testifier is in person. It’s Kelly Jansen.
Hi, my name is Kelly Jansen. I’m with the Child Protection League Action, and our mission is to protect children from indoctrination, exploitation, and violence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today during your public hearing. The Child Protection League works with victims and law enforcement officers who all say that your lack of strong sentencing guidelines for sexual predators... that your lack of strong sentencing guidelines for sexual predators creates a living hell for the victims. Our current guidelines are already so weak that almost 90% of predators convicted of possessing, distributing, and producing images and videos of the rape, torture, and defilement of children get probation only. Minnesota's sentencing guidelines are some of the weakest in the nation. Minnesota is not protecting survivors and victims. We are developing a reputation for being a sanctuary state for criminals, which is why we are appalled that your newest proposals are focused on saving money by reducing the prison bed population by 536. Those in Minnesota convicted of sexual abuse crimes against the most vulnerable, our children, are criminals of the worst kind, yet the vast majority of them get off with probation only and consistently reoffend while on probation. Let me share just a few tragic examples, of which there are many more. Jacob Kin from Bemidji, he was convicted for possession of child sexual abuse material. He was also arrested for child sexual abuse material production. And while he was on probation, he kidnapped a little girl who was only five years old, raped her, and then killed her babysitter. The Level III sex offender, Shannon Michael Benson, he was out on probation for numerous domestic abuse-related convictions. He murdered a woman and her unborn baby just a little over a month ago. A Woodbury man, Michael Flynn, was found possessing child sexual abuse materials while on probation from a similar crime in May. A middle school assistant principal who had victimized 55 boys and girls in his school would have received only probation, but because he was charged federally, he is behind bars for decades where he can't hurt little kids anymore. This year, a predator in Brooklyn Park who sexually assaulted a six-year-old boy only got time served and probation. So common sense would ask, why aren't you working to do the opposite? Why doesn't your proposal work to put more convicted predators behind bars? The 2021 Sentencing Guidelines Commission Minority Report to the Legislature describes how heinous these crimes are against children. Little children, including infants, are being raped, tortured, and defiled. Those are real victims. Every single incident is a crime scene against a minor child. Survivors in the community can only have peace of mind when justice is served, knowing predators are behind bars where they belong and can no longer hurt children. It also gives treatment counselors the tools to work with convicts because offenders must fear consequences. Our government spends millions of dollars every year on websites, empty storage buildings, rest areas, bus stops, bike lanes, and trails. It defies logic that your justification for these reductions for incarceration is money. We have shootings and carjackings every day in the metro area that terrorize law-abiding citizens. Just this weekend, I had my own car broken into. So how does releasing more criminals back on the streets promote public safety? We hear from you a shifting sympathy from the victim to the perpetrator. We adamantly oppose the proposal to lighten the sentencing guidelines for repeat offenders. We, and the public at large, demand protection from violence against our children. At a minimum, this commission should be raising the sentencing guidelines to at least the federal guidelines for those convicted of crimes against children, especially for criminal sex crimes and for the possession, production, and distribution of child sexual abuse imagery. Does the public approve of your proposals? No, we do not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen. I just wanted to let you know that the guidelines for many of those offenses were increased this past year. The legislature actually directed us to increase them, and we did. So I just wanted to make you aware that some of those sentences that you were concerned about have been changed.
I am aware of that, but it's not enough.
All right. Well, good. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know that.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier is Willis Crumholtz.
My name is Willis Crumholtz. I work in the financial services industry, and I'm a part-time writer at The Federalist. I began covering Minnesota's treatment of child predators in 2019. Because of this reporting, I'm here to ask the MSGC to not repeal the custody status point section when it comes to sex crimes, especially crimes involving children. In other words, if the MSGC is to move forward with this change, it should make a specific carve-out for repeat sex offenders. These crimes against children grow often undetected. Generally, prosecutions are lower relative to criminality in Minnesota. The MSGC's own report shows that adjusting for population prosecutions for sex crimes against children are even lower in our state than other states. Predators who commit these crimes are also highly likely to be repeat offenders, generally as support criminal justice reform, especially when it comes to nonviolent drug crimes, which disproportionately impact the working class and Black Americans. But the category of crimes involving sex offenses, especially against children, is completely different. If a predator is caught a second time, given it is hard to catch a predator relative to other lesser forms of criminality in the first place, this is a textbook case where the system must punish the predator more harshly to keep the predator off the streets, to keep children safe. Our state is already extremely lenient on child predators to a degree that is extremely troubling. In 2016, a report found that for criminal sexual conduct where a child victim was 12 years old or younger, probation was given out at least 50% of the time and close to 60% of the time in more populous counties. In Washington County, probation in these cases was given out almost 60% of the time. Only John Cho's Ramsey County stands out in a positive way, where probation is given only 40% of the time. Keep in mind that these are actual contact crimes against children. Roughly 85% of the predators in that study, trading in and possessing child rape and torture videos, received probation in Minnesota. In Hennepin County, that was 93%, and Washington County, 97%. Studies ignored by the MSGC in its latest report on this matter show the majority of the predators viewing child rape and child abuse imagery are also contact offenders, and certainly 100% of these offenders are active threats to children around them. The MSGC report released in early 2021 confirmed these overall statistics, finding that Minnesota was probably the most lax state in the nation when it came to punishing child predators. The MSGC admitted that even when comparing Minnesota to the states that the MSGC cherry-picked to compare against, Minnesota is the only state where the sentencing guidelines recommends probation, not prison, for offenders who are in possession of a collection of child sexual abuse imagery. But by falsely claiming internet offenders have lower recidivism, the MSG majority didn't act or increase penalties on persons viewing child rape imagery. The MSGC in early 2021 only acted, finally, to presume prison for persons producing child rape or abuse imagery with a child under the age of 13. Let that sink in. The legislature stepped in this year and finally presumed prison for disseminating child rape and abuse imagery when the predator is a repeat offender or if the victim in the images or videos is under the age of 13. The problem here is that the lesser crime of possession, which again involves predators with collections of infant and toddler rape videos and images, still results in probation. Prosecutors can charge either possession or dissemination for each predator they encounter, and Minnesota vastly overuses charges of possession. For example, Oregon charged possession 92 times and dissemination or distribution 260 times in the period examined by the MSGC report. Well, Minnesota charged possession 427 times and dissemination only 32 times. In plain math, that means if the last five years of data is indicative on a go-forward basis, the new bill would potentially affect roughly 4% of the convictions for trading in child sexual abuse imagery, resulting in, at most, 20 more predators being given short prison sentences during the next five years. More than 80% of predators would still receive probation. This is a stand on both the legislature and the MSGC. Instead of going easy on criminality, the MSGC should be working with the legislature to, for example, get Minnesota prosecutors to begin charging enhanced dissemination resulting in prison on levels comparable with other states. Or fight to get more convictions of predators in a CSC case when the child is under 13, including by making exceptions for the requirement to have the child face the predator in a courtroom, and by the way, this could be done or should be done for all sex crime cases. If the MSGC moves forward today without carving out an exception for child predation or sex crimes generally, it will be another step in Minnesota's sad history of downplaying and nearly decriminalizing these crimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for our testifier, Mr. Crumholtz? All right. Thank you very much for your time. Call the next testifier.
Next testifier is Robert Small.
Please go ahead. Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Robert Small. I am the executive director of the Minnesota County Attorneys Association. I am here on behalf of our 87 county attorneys and their hundreds of assistants to voice our strong opposition to the current proposal to eliminate any additional or heightened consequence for an offender that is under some type of supervision for a prior criminal offense when the offender commits a new offense. As you commissioners know, the sentencing guidelines have always had in existence a defendant's criminal history score that has included a defendant's custody status at the time of the commission of the new offense. So if that defendant was under some type of supervision for a prior offense when he or she committed a new offense, one point would be added, and it could be two points for sex offenses. Then in 2019, the commission re-looked at the entirety of the criminal history score and reduced, for non-sex offenses, custody status to a half a point. This resulted in an unusual situation of a criminal history score ending up with a half a point. That led judges and practitioners to decide whether they should round up or round down. That resulted in inconsistency in application and unfairness, and the commission wanted to do something about it. What the commission did from the county attorney's perspective is took the drastic approach of entirely eliminating custody, consideration of an offender's custody status at the time a new offense was committed. From a public safety perspective, from a fairness perspective, our county attorneys favor the proposal that is not before the commission today. We're in favor of the proposal advanced by Judge Larkin, supported by our county attorney on the commission, as well as Justice Moore and Judge Knutson. Absent that approach, and by acceptance of this total elimination of consideration of a person's custody status, public safety, fairness, and equity in sentencing of like offenders will not be achieved. It makes common sense that the offenders who commit an offense while being supervised on probation or on supervised release from prison are more culpable for the flagrant disregard of a previously imposed judicial order or for breaching the trust of the releasing authority than an offender who is not under such supervision. Under the current proposal that is being considered, two offenders who commit the same crime and have the same criminal history score will be treated the same in terms of consequences, even though one offender is on supervision and has a custody status designation and the other one does not. For the guidelines to no longer consider an added consequence for this behavior is not good for public safety, it's not good for fairness, and it's not good for sentencing policy. It's just not good policy to reward the non-compliant supervised offender, particularly if the offender is a sex offender. And it is for these reasons that the County Attorneys Association strongly opposes the elimination of consideration of an offender's custody status in calculating criminal history score. Thank you, Madam Chair, members, for allowing us to speak today. Stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Larkin, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Small. Do you take a position regarding the third option that the commission considered that is making the custody status a potential aggravating sentencing factor?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can you try doing that louder?
Yes, how's that? I'm sorry. Mr. Small, do you, on behalf of the County Attorneys Association, take a position on the third option that the commission looked at, which was making the custody status a potential aggravating factor for sentencing purposes?
Okay. What she's asking is, do you have a position on the third option that the commission considered, which is to make custody status an aggravating factor?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Judge Larkin, we never got past Judge Larkin's proposal. We thought Judge Larkin's proposal made the most sense, so we never got to the third.
So you never discussed it at the association?
So we don't have a position on the third one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Chanel?
Thank you so much for the testimony. I just, I wonder what, when you talk about not good for public safety, can you describe what, how you see directly the correlation between public safety and the...
Certainly. Thank you. And I'm sorry about this, but I'm going to bring up one of your cases.
Sure.
As you know, you just released a first-degree, first-degree sale drug offender to Wadena County who had a 105-month sentence and was released on the SIP program when he had a lot more than 48 months left. And you got some Phase I and Phase II, and sometimes they can be released earlier than 48 months. He was back in the community for a very short period of time and got arrested for first-degree drug sale. All right? That is what we are talking about, public safety. He will not face an additional consequence because he was just released from prison under supervision and committed the same crime, first-degree drug sale. That's not good for public safety, Commissioner.
But I appreciate that, Mr. Small. I would say, though, that, would you agree that he will face a consequence for the violation based on his underlying offense?
Yes, he will, but he will face the same consequence as someone who is not under supervision. That doesn't make good common sense, and it doesn't make sense for public safety. He ought to face greater consequences because he was under supervision, supposedly remaining law-abiding, and what did he do? He went out and went into the community and sold drugs. That's not good public safety, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
And I think I would absolutely agree that his violation of that release is not acceptable. It's not okay. But I also, you know, just want to make sure we agree that he will face consequences for being revoked. In fact, the legislature carves out specifically for that program a response, which is a bit different than some of the cases we might talk about.
I'm not critical, Commissioner, of the fact that he was qualified for the program. That wasn't the purpose. The purpose was, you asked me about public safety. That's an example of the impact of public safety, and that person was under supervision and ought to have a consequence for that. Under this proposal, he does not have that consequence. He's got the consequence that the same thing would happen to a first degree. Who's not under supervision? That doesn't make sense to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Estrada, try to speak as loudly as you can.
I'll try. Hi, Judge Small.
Hi.
Thank you for the testimony today. Are you aware of the different types of supervision that there is? Not only what's written in the guidelines in terms of parole and conditional release and probation, but how probation departments around the state do their supervision, meaning some people are not supervised or actively supervised, some people are on probation to the courts, some people are on low risk and don't have a one-on-one agent but doing more group reporting, not getting necessarily the services that they may need, and that those people are also getting the custody status points.
Were you able to hear that, or do you want me to repeat?
I would. I think I've got it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Estrada, thank you very much for the question. I am aware of that. And to me and to the county attorneys, it doesn't make a difference. The fact that there's supervision means that there are conditions, and the condition is, don't commit another crime. And so whether or not the person is actually being supervised by daily contact, weekly contact, monthly contact, the person is supposed to remain law-abiding. The person is not remaining law-abiding, the person ought to have a consequence for that. So thank you for the question. I hope I've answered it.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I was approached by Representative New Brindley. She says she has a 2 o'clock meeting and would request to testify out of order. Do you... Do you consent to that? Oh, she already left.
Oh, she is here. Okay, yes. Yes, we will go ahead. Please approach the testifier bench. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the latitude in allowing me to speak earlier. As you know, we're all very busy around here and try to make our many meetings. But thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to offer public comment. My name is Ann Newbrindley. I serve as the deputy leader of the Republican Caucus here in the House of Representatives, and I'm here to bring forward the immense concern that we have about this dangerous proposal. Earlier this month, over 50 members of our caucus sent a letter to the commission, and I want to echo some of the concerns that we raised in that, in that letter in my testimony today. First and foremost, Minnesotans are not asking you to do this. As the deputy leader of our caucus, that gives me opportunity to travel around our state a lot, and, and as I do so, I talk to a lot of Minnesotans about their concerns. And not once, not once, have I heard them asking for the state to reduce sentences for repeat criminals. It's disturbing to me that the commission, which was created to help bring uniformity to sentencing, which is certainly a worthy goal, is now being used as a tool by the Walz administration to reduce sentences for repeat criminals. And with all due respect, an unelected board with little notice to or attention from the public is pushing drastic changes to our sentencing laws that put the public at risk. Most outrageously, this proposal provides the most benefit to sex offenders. Getting rid of custody points across the board would remove two full points assigned to sex offenders. And goes against the stated goals of the sentencing commission. This body is on record as saying, I'm going to quote this, "The commission believes that offenders who commit a subsequent sex offense pose so significant a risk to public safety that their criminal history scores should be enhanced to reflect that risk." Let me say that again. The commission believes that offenders who commit a subsequent sex offense pose so significant a risk to public safety that their criminal history scores should be enhanced to reflect this risk. Minnesotans are tired. We are tired of preventable tragedies committed by people who have broken the law but are not being held accountable by our judicial system. They are tired of carjackings, of catalytic converter thefts, of shootings, of smash-and-grabs in our stores. The complete attitude of lawlessness that we seem to be forced to just tolerate. We are tired. No one voted for this. No one is asking for us to reduce sentences for repeat criminals. We want our prosecutors, judges, and you, the commission, to enforce the law and enforce the penalties spelled out in state law as passed by elected legislators. They don't want an unelected board primarily appointed by the governor deciding that we need to go easier on repeat criminals. If Governor Walz, who could stop this if he decided to actually take a position on it? If he believes that our sentences are too harsh, he should come out and say so. He should have a bill introduced by the legislature. He should stand behind it and defend it publicly instead of refusing to comment when reporters ask him where he stands on this push by his commissioners and employees. Instead, as stated, Madam Chair, as you stated, while the legislature directed the commission to increase sentencing for sex trafficking, now the commission is using this backdoor process to reduce those sentences after increasing them. I am asking you to have some common sense. Listen to what Minnesotans are saying. Listen to the hundreds of public comments that you have received, the vast majority of which are against this proposal. Please reject this dangerous and unnecessary proposal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative Newbrindley, I have a question for you. Are you, I know that you raised some concerns about sentencing for sex offenders. Are you aware that we do have within the guidelines an aggravating factor that allows for an increased sentence if, if a person commits a new sex offense after committing a prior sex offense?
Regardless of what is currently in the, the standards, the sentencing guidelines, the current proposal will reduce those.
I will say that the aggravating factor will allow the court to go up to the stat-max if that's what they deem appropriate. So it's actually a more powerful tool than the custody status proposal that's in our guidelines that we're, that we're proposing to reduce right now.
Well, with all due respect, the proposal automatically reduces sentencing. So, so I understand that there is some leeway there for the judges, but the sentencing guidelines is proposing a position to, off the bat, reduce those, that sentencing guideline.
Most people, our research did show, were you aware of the research that showed that on the sex offender grid, most people who were receiving custody status were not receiving it for committing a new sex offense but for failure to register? Were you aware of that?
And yet, the proposal applies across the board. It doesn't take those things into account.
All right. Do we have any other questions from members of the commission? Thank you very much for your testimony today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Call the next test.
Madam Chair, I'm being informed by Capitol Security that they're asking folks to exit on the east, west, or north side of the building. Please don't exit. For the time being, on the south side of the building, they're just dealing with something happening on the south side of the building. The south side being the main entrance.
So just to be clear, if, if you're leaving, you're asking people to go out a particular door?
Right. If you're leaving, there's actually a door right, just to our right. You can, you can exit that way, I believe. All right. So the next testifier is Lars Nixted.
Mr. Nixted, is he online or in person?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Mr. Nixted?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Please go ahead. And talk as loud as you can, please. Thank you.
Okay, I can talk loud. Madam members, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Lars Nixted. I'm the policy director for Isaiah. Isaiah is a statewide organization of congregations, mosques, childcare centers, and barber shops. Our mission is to enable people to organize for racial and economic justice. I'm here to speak in support of the proposal to eliminate custody status points from the criminal history score. No matter where or how we practice, most people of faith agree that every human being is capable of doing harm, and every single one of us is capable of change. Yet our current policies are overly harsh. These policies result in needless pain and suffering, not only for people who may have committed offenses, but also for their families, loved ones, and communities. The inclusion of custody status in criminal history score is a prime example of a harshly punitive policy. It is literally doubling down on the notion that we should keep people trapped in their past rather than offering them a pathway to rehabilitation and reconciliation. Even more disturbing are the implications for those who might be saddled with a criminal history simply because they don't have the resources to fight charges. As Sarah Seo, professor of law at Columbia University notes, "Around 95% of criminal cases in the U.S. end with guilty pleas. For the poor, who are disproportionately people of color, the criminal justice system in the United States is essentially a plea and probation system. This reality of our current system makes the inclusion of custody status in the criminal history score an unconscionable and racially unjust policy. As we understand it, custody status is the only element of the criminal history score that does not measure prior offenses. By its very nature and terminology, it has nothing to do with history. It is rather a measure of the current status of the individual in question. You'll hear opponents of this measure, as we've heard today, suggest that it will reduce sentences for serious violent crimes. But my understanding of data presented by commission staff show that most people affected by custody status points are convicted of lower-level drug and property crimes. People with a criminal history who re-offend are already subject to increased punishment. There is simply no need to double down on that by including custody status. Overly punitive policies diminish our common humanity, harm human dignity, and limit our collective potential. They can also be counterproductive, trapping people in poverty, decreasing resilience, and making our society less safe. Please reject the voices of fear and frankly, the bloodlust that is on display here today. We urge your support for this common sense reform. Thank you."
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nixted? All right, thank you for your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier also online is Jay Lindgren.
Mr. Lindgren.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Can you speak as loud as possible?
Yeah, I will try. Good afternoon. My name is Jay Lindgren. I live in St. Louis Park. I'm a retired corrections professional after doing direct service and administering state correctional agencies in Minnesota, Texas, and Rhode Island. Currently, I'm a volunteer leader with Isaiah, a faith-based organization striving to strengthen our multicultural democracy. The views I express today do not necessarily represent those of Isaiah. I come before you today in support of repealing the custody status rules. I am motivated by both principles of fairness and what the data tells us. I do not believe that custody status should ever count towards a prison admission or an extent, extension of an individual's time in prison. Prison entry and length of stay should be the result of an individual's criminal behavior, not their status at the time of their criminal act. Data analyzed by the Robina Institute tells us that eliminating the custody status point affected 4,423 individuals, 48% of the 2,003 sample. That is a lot of individual human beings. They add that custody status is a weak predictor of recidivism, and I quote, "Retaining it in the score's formulation only helps to identify an additional one out of every 100 recidivists," end quote. Their analysis further concludes that eliminating the custody status point will reduce racial disparities. In my opinion, reducing the number of individuals serving prison time by eliminating a weak predictor of future criminal acts is a proper way to save our tax dollars. But even more important, it is based on solid principles of fairness. One hears repeatedly that one of the core problems facing criminal justice in our state and country is trust in our system, especially among a marginalized people. If it were me or a loved one about to be sentenced to prison rather than probation or on the way to prison with eligibility for release delayed because of a previous custody status point, your decision next week would be monumental. Webster defines double-dipping as obtaining an income from different, two different sources, typically in an illicit way. Custody status allows the state to double-dip into one's limited time on earth. Custody status is not a measure of one's criminal history. It is the only item in a criminal history score that is not a measure of prior offending. It does not belong in the criminal history score. An individual's incarceration should be based, if not solely, on the seriousness of their commitment, offense, and prior criminal convictions. Thank you for granting me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Any questions from commission members? Okay, we'll move on to the next testifier. Thank you.
Next testifier is Chief Eric Warner.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
We, we can. If you could speak as loudly as possible, that will help us in this room here. Thank you, Chief Warner.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Eric Warner. I'm the president of the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association and chief of police for the city of Maple Grove. I'm here this afternoon representing over 300 police chiefs and another 150 command staff members from police agencies across the state. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to the commission today on this important public safety topic. For many years, a defendant's criminal history score included consideration of a defendant's custody status at the time he or she commits a new crime. In 2019, the Minnesota Sentencing Guideline Commission reduced the consequences for committing a new crime from one full point to a half point. The Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association feels strongly the commission should continue to consider including the custody status when an individual commits an additional crime. We feel this will provide consistency, fairness, and legitimacy. We believe offenders who commit an offense while being supervised on probation or parole or supervised release must be held accountable for their disregard of a previously imposed judicial order or conditions of probation or released. Therefore, the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association opposes the elimination of considering an offender's custody status in calculating the criminal history score. Furthermore, the Minnesota Chiefs of Police supports the proposal advanced by Judge Michelle Larkin to amend the grids to display the half points on the grids. By doing so, there will be more consistency, fairness, and equity in sentencing. Again, Madam Chair, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association to publicly express our views on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission have a question? All right, thank you for your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier in person is Representative Matt Grossell.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, for allowing me to give my public testimony. Good afternoon, my name is Matt Grossell. I'm a member of the Minnesota House of Representatives, and I serve for District 2A, which is north, north central Minnesota. As you know, a number of our Minnesota House of Representatives co-signed a letter opposing the sentencing guidelines commission's proposal to repeal of custody status points for offenders still serving a sentence who commit another felony crime. I am one of those members who signed that letter, and I feel very strongly that the commission should reject this proposal. And I was just curious, Madam Commissioner, that has this letter been posted on your site for public display, public viewing?
The letter is part of our public record, which I believe will be posted for the January hearing. Is that correct, Director Wright?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, Representative Grossell, we have included that already in Part 1 of the public hearing written comments. There will be additional parts, one or more additional parts, but because that letter had been received by the time that I sent out the commission materials last week, it is on our website as part of that package.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Because I want everybody to know that a good portion of our legislature, our House Legislature, opposes this. But I want to focus on one aspect of what this repeal of custody status points would do. It would mean that dangerous sex offenders would be released onto the streets earlier. The sex offenders are such a dangerous group of offenders that they are currently assigned two custody status points. There's a reason for that. There was a reason for that, and that was, that was echoed earlier in other testimony. These people are dangerous. Sex offenders are prone to recidivism. We should be keeping them in prison, away from the public longer, and not releasing them earlier to victimize more people. I don't think that right now... I don't think that right now with this recommendation that the victims are really being listened to, are really being heard, really being represented. I spent a career in law enforcement and worked closely with professionals who investigate sex and child pornography crimes. The victims of these crimes have scars that will be with them for the rest of their lives. A lot of them will be looking over their shoulders, wondering, "Who will recognize me?" You need to listen to the victims. You need to better represent them in this. You've also heard testimony earlier of the violent crime rate increase in Minnesota. Now, these aren't statistics, and I don't have numbers for you. But I stay in touch with the boots on the ground. I stay in touch with our officers on the front line. And the things that I'm hearing from them are disturbing, especially when this recommendation has come to light, that a very high percentage of these people committing these crimes have violent crimes in their criminal history or are on probation for a crime similar. That's what I'm hearing from our people out on the front lines. You'll get those stats, and they will come the next year. As many of you know, when the commission was considering the reranking of child pornography offenses last year, I sent a letter. I sent a letter asking the commission to rerank child pornography, possession, and distribution presumptive sentences on a sex offender sentencing grid, higher than what the commission eventually adopted. You missed a great opportunity there, and I'm glad for what was done. But like my letter said, you missed an opportunity to better represent, to give more justice to these victims.
What's that?
These people are not just casual viewers of child rape and torture, sexual abuse, video and imagery. It's not pornography. That's not pornography. It's child rape and torture, sexual abuse, sexual assault, video and imagery. And some of those I mentioned earlier, that they will spend the rest of their life looking over their shoulder, "Who might recognize me? Who might see me out here?" It's harder for them to heal. Thankfully, the legislature directed the commission to give them a higher ranking and to pass legislative session. Now, what has been done as far as presumed sentence for dissemination, presumed sentence for production, this is not going to help at all. This is not going to hold these offenders accountable, the way they should be. This is not going to be giving victims the justice they deserve. To me, this is a slap in the victim's face.
Representative Grossell, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up. Just about to the end of it. Thank you. The legislature also directed the Sentencing Guidelines Commission to rerank sex traffickers' sentences to reflect increased penalties. The legislation passed this year, but the commission thought it more important to scheme a way to let more sex offenders out of prison than do the work legislature mandated and increase the presumptive sentences for sex traffickers. You asked for direction. The legislature does its job. You got to do yours too, to help us and protect the state, to protect the citizens. Again, I have dedicated my work in the legislature to keeping people safe from criminals, especially dangerous sex offenders and child pornography purveyors. The elimination of custody status points is counter to the work I have dedicated my legislative career to doing. I urge the commission to think about the victims. Think about the victims. I'm talking from toddler to infant to teenagers to adults. They didn't ask for it. They were victims. And reject this proposal. Thank you.
All right. So Director Wrights wants to correct what he said earlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize, Representative Grossell, I misspoke. That letter is not on our website yet. I did provide it to the commission members, but it will be posted on the website together with all other meeting materials prior to the January 13th meeting.
Thank you.
It's part of our public record to pull all of the public comments together and make those available. So I think that's why it's not up there yet.
Good. Thank you.
And the comment period closes next week. Before I let you go, is there anyone on the commission that has a question? Commissioner Marath, please.
I would just like to say, as a victim of a violent serial rapist myself, I absolutely share your concern and your compassion for victims. And you're absolutely right in the sense that it is truly terrible to live a life looking over your shoulder in that fear. That said, I have found personally that knowledge has been power in that healing process. And my question for you is, your thoughts on... Would you say that victims ought to know that the data behind how the custody status point affects perpetrators currently, re-offenders, in terms of not being mostly on the technical recidivism as opposed to new offenses? Do you think that's an important piece of information that victims ought to know?
Is it Brooke?
Yes.
Okay. Getting... Oh, my eyes are getting shaky a little bit at a time. You know, it is important. It is important. But what I've asked for is to make sure that these predators, these types of violent crimes, do not let up on them. Do not go light on them. Do not go soft on them. If there are issues that need to be looked at, look at them. Many people have come up and they've asked for a car loan for this type of crime. I want you to consider the victims in this, tactical or not, wherever it's at. Right now, Minnesota is the lowest, one of the lowest for incarceration for child pornography crimes, child rape, torture, sexual abuse crimes. We're one of the lowest, one of the worst. We're tied, we're in a four-way tie with other states as far as lowest as far as incarceration. And the last year, we incarcerated less than the years before. So we are trying to, we are, as a legislature, we are as citizens, trying to make sure that those places, those prison cells are reserved for those who should be there. I don't believe this recommendation is going to help us to accomplish that.
Commissioner Snell, you have a question?
Thank you, Representative Grossell. I just, I want to go back a little bit to the comment to think that the chair had asked earlier about the use of the aggravating factor provision, which is currently in the guidelines and would remain in the guidelines, allowing for those cases where there has been a previous offense and a reoffense under these certain conditions to receive a sentence up to the statutory maximum, the legislative statutory maximum. You do not see that as a viable tool to address the concerns that you raise?
Commissioner Shell, Judge Smol, spell it out really good as far as how the county attorneys stand. If you have someone that's on probation and they commit another crime, another violent crime, there needs to be extra weight on that. There needs to be extra weight put on that.
And I think that was, I guess, the question. Is the provision that is in guidelines today related to the sexual offenses that you're concerned about and we all are concerned about? Is that provision not satisfactory in terms of addressing the court's ability to address these dangerous offenders to the fullest extent of the law up to the statutory maximum as established by the legislature?
If you leave these custody points in place, it'll do its job. You cut these custody points out, you're undercutting your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Representative Grossell? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next testifier.
Thank you again.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, it's come to my attention that Representative Mariani also has a schedule issue. Would you be willing to call on him next?
Yes, let's go ahead and call on Representative Mariani.
Is he in the queue? I'm sorry. Why don't we call on our next person and then we can put Representative Mariani in the queue? So the next person would be Sheriff Dave Lang.
Sheriff Lang.
Can you hear me?
Sort of. Or just shout. Shout at us. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
All right. My name is Dave Lang, sheriff of Nicola County. I'm here this afternoon to testify on behalf of our 87 elected sheriffs to express our strong opposition to the current proposal to eliminate the custody status point for an offender that is under some type of supervision for a prior offense when the offender commits a new offense. From a public safety perspective, the thought of eliminating this status point makes little sense. Too often, law enforcement officers are dealing with offenders that commit new crimes that are already supposed to be under supervision. That supervision is supposed to offer both rehabilitation and public assurances that the offender's behavior is being monitored. We find this supervision is not occurring. When these supervised offenders commit new offenses, these offenders demonstrate that they have no respect for the judicial orders placed on them. These offenders need to be held accountable, and the public expects that as well. The custody status point serves public safety as it accomplishes holding individuals accountable and fulfills the public's expectation that individuals who violate the law while under supervision face additional consequences for their behavior. For these reasons, the Minnesota Sheriff's Association opposes the elimination of considering an offender's custody status in calculating the criminal history score. Thank you for the opportunity to publicly express the views of the sheriffs on this important issue.
Thank you, Sheriff Lang. Does anyone have a question on the commission? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to the next testifier.
Madam Chair, the next testifier by telephone is Representative Carlos Mariani.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, just please try talking loudly. We're just having some audio problems here in the room. Thank you.
I will do that. WebEx is a new technology for me, so I apologize for not being visual with you. Chair Mitchell and members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm Carlos Mariani Rosa, State Representative 65B, St. Paul. I want to thank you also for your service to the people of Minnesota. My primary purpose for appearing before you today, as I have done so before, is to reiterate my support for this commission operating independent of political interference. I think it's important that the record reflects that a legislator spoke in defense of the independence of this body as authorized in state law and as such emanating from the state legislature itself. As someone who operates in the political arena, I value this commission because at its best and as intended, it is a space dedicated to ensuring that objective data analysis and community conversations drive decisions that A, promote public safety, B, promotes racial equity, and C, promotes individual liberty. I offer this testimony to reassert the importance of this space and reassert the need for an agency that creates policy and corrections independent of political gaymanship, partisan dog whistles, and media manipulation. In short, I am testifying to remind all of us of the importance of not politicizing public safety. As we know, this commission was established in 1978 as the nation's first sentencing guidelines commission. Since its founding, 28 other jurisdictions have taken suit and established similar commissions. Legislators across the nation created commissions because of the common understanding of how the general public and politicians who serve them, like me, tend to reflexively support punitive sentencing measures that often fail to promote public safety and result in needless deprivation of freedom, burdensome taxpayer costs, and unimaginable racial and regional disparities. Often, such measures have led to worsen public safety outcomes. It's no exaggeration to say that these bodies are built to help us, the politicians and the public, from only allowing our worst biases in public pressure to drive policy. This brings me to the concerns I have with some of my legislative colleagues' recent inputs on the process at hand. I felt the need to speak out on this matter because of the recent political activities surrounding this proposal. As of late, I've seen politicians descend on the commission furiously writing partisan letters and partisan press releases in an attempt to infuse partisanship into its deliberations. Today, some politicians are testifying, as they have in the past, against any action taken by the commission because it's acting independently of their partisan political prerogatives. This, even though any decision made by this body can be ultimately changed by actual legislature itself. So, as I said already, I think it's important for this body to be free to deliberate without political disagreements complicating or compromising your deliberations. To the point of the custody status policy change, I want to offer this thought. It's my understanding throughout the criminal legal process that there are mechanisms in place to ensure repeat offenders almost always suffer harsher consequences for their actions after reoffending. These are all in bounds, whether it's punitive statutory enhancements or aggressive prosecutors. It's how we, in fact, get tough on crime. And it's also how we advance public safety. But when it's done wrong, it also creates the kind of inequities that you're tasked to respond to. So, as someone who has encouraged you in the past to actually get tough on sex offenders, I'm encouraging you to use the data to guide your decisions today. And if it means that you need to do greater discernment among offenders in doing so, so be it. These debates are tough without politicians in the room disregarding data, promoting unfounded fears, and trying to carve communities up into camps who are told they must choose between supporting liberty or supporting safety. Ultimately, disregarding the political influence as statute intends benefits the work you all do, benefits the work that we legislators do, and benefits the people of Minnesota at large. I trust you will continue doing that work, as you have for most of my tenure, with the integrity and independence needed to make tough decisions brought before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mariani. Does any member of the commission have a question? All right, seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Latrell Snyder, also remotely.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I want to thank you for this opportunity to testify today. My name is Latrell Snyder, and I am here to ask you to support the reform to eliminate the custody status from the criminal history score. Here's what you should know about me. I wrote something, so I don't get off track, so I'm just going to read it. The thing I am most proud of is my kids. I love my kids. They keep me going. Kids are the future. They're the future commissioners and chair. So they need all of our investment. And my daughter is six. She looks just like me. My son is almost... My son is almost two. My daughter probably has like ADHD with all her energy that she brings, I'm convinced. She's smart, but she doesn't apply herself as much as she could. And I used to be there every day with her, and now I only get her on the weekends. So, I feel like that has a little bit to do with it as well. I want to be there for her and my other child as well. So, both of my kids, I want to do right by them, and I want them to grow and be good people. So, I grew up in South Minneapolis, not far from where George Floyd was murdered by police last year. My mom was a nurse. She's always taken care of people, and that's where I got it from. I like to help people as well. I like seeing people happy. I like being the reason that people are happy or does have a smile on their face. Anyway, my mom, she worked nights, and me and my two brothers would sneak out and hang out with friends sometimes. I ended up with two curfew tickets during my childhood. So, I'll be honest with you guys. I have a record. I've been on paper more or less for about 10 years, since like 2013, just about mostly minor charges. But these points, they add up. Probation violations, missing a court date, driving infractions. If you miss a court date, you get a point. Every little thing you do, you get a point. You don't get points taken away for writing them or letting them know that you're late to court, or you know, they'll still issue a warrant out for your arrest, and points are being added almost for like anything. So, and it's been a dark cloud over my head every day for years now. So, any new charge that I get, I'll be off the grid, and there's no more probation for me. I've made my share of mistakes, but I'm trying to do right by my kids and my community at this point. And that's why I think it just makes sense to just look at the criminal history score itself. Don't double up on us. Give us extra points just for being on paper. It ain't fair. It ain't right. Please do what you can to give people like me a chance. Thank you guys for listening, Madam Chair and Commissioner. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Snyder, thank you for sharing your story with us today. Does anyone have a question? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier in person is Kira Cottle.
It's Kira. That's okay. It's a common mistake. So, thank you all for just being here today. I know the weather was a little bit crazy, so it's nice to see faces in seats. I recently received an email about this issue, and honestly, my heart was so grieved that people of Minnesota, mothers, grandmothers, aunts, uncles, people that were children at one point, would think that it's acceptable to be lenient on those that commit crimes of perversion and malice. That's what we are talking about. We're talking about policy that is addressing violent crimes on children, and that's, it's not a light topic by any means. So, a little bit of my history, I was a victim of abuse, sexual abuse as a child, and the desire for a person, an offender, a predator, to steal so much from that person, their identity, their confidence, their voice, it will dismantle a person. And I have spent the better half of my entire life growing from that pain, growing from that trauma, and it is not a small feat. It is not a small feat. I don't think each and every one of you truly understand the severity that it causes in a person's life for their personal boundaries, emotional, physical, mental boundaries, to be broken so by another person and we as adults? Because that's what we are, right? It is our moral responsibility to stand up for the people that don't have the right to be here in this room right now. The children that don't have the right to stand here and speak for themselves, right? I'm a mother, and the idea of a person violating my child's personal space, I can tell you, and I know my heart, my reaction would be vengeful. And not one of us is good, right? Like, I'm not going to tell you that I've never done anything wrong because that would be a lie, wouldn't it? Now, each and every one of you, we've all made mistakes, right? If my actions to avenge a predator's attack on my child was met with the severity of the law that it would be, why are we not also meeting that initial attack then with the utmost severity? Taking away the checks and balances, what I see from my perspective is that the commission wants to wash their hands of their part in it. All I see is that you want to say, you know what? You're on parole, but I'm not, I'm not actually responsible for putting you on parole, so therefore your choices then are not a reflection of my reviewing the criteria or holding you to a standard, right? So, I think it is so important that not only do we continue to keep this point system in place, but we need to address why the consequences for these violent actions are not all the more severe. Now, there are many people that I represent here right now, and not one of them agrees with negating the point system that you are proposing today. Not one of them. So, not only do I speak from a position of being a victim, but that of a mother, that of a person in our state. Like, I have other issues with the fact that you're an appointed committee, but we won't address those here now because we are talking about policy, and that policy is what affects people, right? People. People that grow up to affect people, that affect people, that affect people, right? Now, it was brought to my attention this last summer as I sat outside and I saw my child offend another child, right? Like, the severity of my job to intentionally train my child, right? I have just one, but that one person will affect a multitude of people I will never be able to count. What I instill in him, what he grows through, will be what he lives out of, right? Just as I had to address the pain and the trauma that I was living out of that caused me to make poor life choices, right? It did. I was homeless on the streets of Minneapolis because of the choices that I made, living out of my trauma and hurt, right? And now, not until I came to a place where I had to address why I was making the choices that I was, was I able to really get back on my feet. And then there was many people and organizations that came along to help me move into civilized living. So, I just want to thank you all for being here and for taking the time to open your ears and, more importantly, open your hearts and really hear that this is wrong on so many levels, so many levels. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story with us today. Before you go, is there anyone who has a question for our testifier? Okay, not seeing anyone. Let's move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier on WebEx, I believe, is Kay Strand.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members. My name is Kay Strand.
Ms. Strand, if you could try to, we're just having audio issues here. If you could try to speak up as much as possible, that would be helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you, I will. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members. My name is Kay Strand, and I have worked at St. Stephen's Men's Homeless Shelter in Minneapolis for 11 years as an advocate and case manager. I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed policy change that would eliminate custody status in the criminal history score. Our clients at the shelter are predominantly Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and about 70% have criminal records related mostly to low-level property crimes and drug crimes. Those drug crimes related to addiction. As we know, in 2021, addiction is a huge health problem. As we also know, a record is a deterrent to both jobs and housing. Ban the Box on unemployment applications has been a huge help for people experiencing homelessness to find work. It was excellent. Work is one of the steps needed for many of our clients to find housing. Once a client with a criminal history has an interview that they're able to get because of Ban the Box and are accepted for a job that is dependent on a background check, many of them hit a brick wall. Many employers accept people now with nonviolent criminal histories, but will not take men on probation. As I understand it, the length of probation in Minnesota is still one of the longest in the country, and it creates a continuous loop for homeless people who are trying to change their lives going forward. Imagine that you have made mistakes and are trying to turn your life around, but years of probation are preventing you from working and finding housing. Shelters were meant to be temporary when they started in 1983. They have become a permanent way to live for people on probation. We should be working to shorten, not lengthen probation. The star less cost for taxpayers to have people working rather than living in the shelter system or on the streets and encampments. Shelters, emergency room visits, jail detox, they're all things that folks fall into when they have no place to live. They're very expensive for our government. The cost of a monthly rate for an apartment for people that can work is far less. Aside from the monetary costs, there is the inhumanity of keeping people down who have served time and want to build back their life. Let us work to reduce jail and prison time. Custody status points end up adding to probation sometime for the smallest things and even jail time without, as I see it, doing much to improve public safety. I urge you to eliminate the custody status points. This will be a good step towards allowing many of our brothers and sisters who live the unimaginable lives of being homeless to move on to lead productive and fulfilled lives in our communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? All right, seeing none, thank you. We will move on to the next testifier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier would be John J. Kramer, but that person has not completed registration. If John J. Kramer is here in the room, please complete registration at the table there. If you're online, please call 651-296-0144. We are required to get additional information other than your name in order to have you testify by the rules that govern this procedure. The next testifier who has completed registration is Julie Wickland, who's testifying remotely.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for having me here today. As I said, I'm Julie Wickland. I live in Minneapolis, and I'm here today to listen and testify as the victim, the reason victim of a violent crime. An armed gunman came into my home on Sunday afternoon, knowing people were home, to rob and terrorize my family. We, the city of Minneapolis and the surrounding communities, are experiencing a significant surge in violent crimes, home invasions, and carjackings. This has been recognized by the Minneapolis Police Department, by neighboring police departments, mayors, members of the public. Most recently, my Freeman's office announced a ramped-up prosecution effort to tackle the explosion in carjackings. I am an infectious disease epidemiologist, and I work at the Minnesota Department of Health on the school and childcare COVID team. I've been working with this team since September of 2020. I work with schools to help them determine mitigation measures to address outbreaks in their school and keep their school safe. I advise them that it is not the time to remove mitigation measures right now when we are in a surge of COVID. I tell you this because I see this as a similar situation, as we should not be removing the custody status point at this time when violent crime is surging, just like we should not remove mitigation when COVID cases are surging. The kid who came into my home with a gun threatening myself, my daughter, and my dog certainly had done this before and has done it since. I am also certain that this individual has been brought in before and does not see any consequences to terrorizing people night after night, day after day. In fact, they were at another home three days after, doing the same thing as my belongings were found with theirs. If they are on probation or parole committing crimes, we have not gotten their attention, and they are blame worthy. This surge in violent crime is definitely the result of the revolving door policies, particularly regard to juveniles. There are people who are second, who need second and third chances, but this should not be applied uniformly to all of these cases. There are others that will test the system, and the word is out that Minnesota is soft on crime. Custody status points should not be taken into account when it applies to violent crime and repeat offenders of violent crime. How can a judge not take into account the status when they have committed a crime while on custody status treated the same as someone who isn't? Doesn't their status tell you about their history? What about the trauma that these repeat offenders have added to the lives of victims like myself, my daughter, my whole family, and my whole community? More and more, every day and every night. I am opposed to removing the custody status points across the board, especially at the same time we are experiencing this exponential surge in crime, especially violent crime. Our family will have to endure the trauma of this horrific event forever, and the people who committed this crime see no consequences, and this has to stop. These people are a risk to our public safety, and I thank you for opposing this custody status points being removed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and sharing your story today. Does any member of the commission have a question? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier is Lisa Walker.
Madam Chair, commissioners, good afternoon, and thank you for your time. My name is Lisa Walker, and like the previous individual giving testimony, I too am a victim of crime. On September 3rd, five days before classes were to start at the University of Minnesota, a beautiful night, neighborhood above, a buzz with excited students, my life was forever changed, worse than my own, my 20-year-old daughter's life. Her confidence, strength, everything she stood for forever changed. Three men entered our southeast Como home, held me at gunpoint while pressing a gun into my daughter's forehead, and threatened to kill us. They robbed us of our possessions, my car. One of these people, a 20-year-old felon on parole for a similar crime, though he had had his gun charge removed because he was a juvenile when sentenced. Our daughter has such extreme PTSD, she has withdrawn from in-person classes at the university and has not slept through the night in 104 days. I thought I would be here today to speak specifically of this horrific event and the damage it has done. However, while preparing, it occurred to me that I am also here today as the sister of a felon, a repeat DWI multi-state offender, eight in fact. After a culmination of 15 failed attempts at alcohol rehabilitation, I can tell you two things that ultimately worked for his current sobriety. Fear, fear of steeper sentences. fear, fear of steeper sentences, and his successful completion of a two-year drug court program in another state. At the time of my brother's worst relapses, all of the programs set up to help him did not work. His supervised probation and all of the required programs, so many people worked so hard to set up to try to make people like him listen, hear, and change. None of them worked, and he fled the state. At the time, all of us loving, caring family members, as awful and heart-wrenching as it was to admit, we felt the only thing that would protect society from his drinking and driving was incarceration. It is incredibly painful to see your intelligent, loving, desperate sibling with a master's degree sit behind a screen in a jumpsuit. I believe to my core in a system that would be more about rehabilitation than punitive. But in both of these scenarios I share with you today, the one single thing is important to note, is that neither the 20-year-old felon nor my beloved brother heard, got it, listened, or learned. I love my brother to the core, but that he was not getting it. I do believe there are those out there whose programs and attendance in those programs will reduce recidivism. Am I just the unlucky one that I have experienced two examples where that is not the case? I am one person. I think not. I feel the individual who came into my home with a gun and threatened us and forever scarred my aspiring 20-year-old does deserve blame-worthiness. I believe the person my brother was does deserve blame-worthiness because, and simply because, they committed a crime before their sentence was finished, and they were not getting it. They were a risk to the safety of others. As a victim of crime, the family member of a DWI felon, I'm aghast at the suggestion that Minneapolis could even consider this, especially right now. The public is crying, lives are lost, lives are being forever changed, right here, right now, as we sit here. I believe to my core in social programs. I wish more than anything they worked for everyone. For those that the programs do not work, please don't make it easier, softer, less intimidating for them to reoffend. I believe to my core that my brother's fear of long-term incarceration helped get him back on his feet. One last thing. My broken-hearted daughter was such fear, anxiety, and PTSD that she withdrew from in-person classes, asks me every single day, "Are they out there, and will they hurt me?" Please, this meeting today will not have a bearing on the past, but please do not do this today. Minnesota needs you. Our situations described are not severe crime, but how can anyone say that our damage is any less? Per the gentleman's testimony before me, mine is a voice of fear. Please do not reject my voice of fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Does anyone have a question? All right, thank you for sharing your story, and we'll move on to the next testifier.
The next testifier would be Jesse Sifko-Ruoff, but that person has not completed registration, so please, if you're here, complete registration. If you're not here, please call 651-296-0144 and complete registration, if you still wish to testify. The next testifiers are Reverend Dr. Heidi Vardeman and Reverend Frank Vardeman.
Are either of those individuals here?
I'm sorry, they will not be testifying in person. They're testifying remotely.
Okay, they're online?
Yes.
Are they online? Okay, so Reverend Dr. Heidi Vardeman and Reverend Frank Vardeman, are you online? And can you unmute and go ahead and testify? Okay, well, we're showing that you're there, but we're not hearing you, so I think we'll move on, but we'll circle back and ask to call you again if you show up later on. So let's call the next testifier.
The next testifier would be Justin Terrell.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Forgive me, it's been a minute since I've used WebEx, so I'm not quite sure how to activate my video. But you can hear me, though, right?
Yes, we can. If you hover down near the middle of the bottom of your screen, you might see the camera icon, but otherwise, just go ahead and start talking.
Yeah, no problem. All I see is audio. I don't see any camera icon. So I'll make my comments. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Justin Terrell. I'm the Executive Director of the Minnesota Justice Research Center. Our mission is to transform our criminal legal system, and we believe in rigorous and balanced research, education, public education, and developing policy with all stakeholders in mind. I'm here today to testify in support of the proposal. You've heard just about every argument that you can hear today, so I'll keep my remarks short and just say that the criminal, the custody point is a redundant and ineffective policy. It affects, it's a no-brainer to get rid of it considering the history of this point and the confusion that it created. I actually appreciate Bob Small's comments and the detail that he took, the time that he took to go into detail about the history of the half-custody point. It's an analysis I think people should consider in this decision. This manufactured punishment that only complicates the guidelines is something that this body is well within its authority to address. Now, I understand that people are, that I understand that people are concerned about dangerous people running the streets and whatnot, but let me be clear. The current situation that we're in with the uptick in violent crime, we are in this situation while we have a custody point. There is no evidence, and you can look at the U.S. Department of Justice, you can point to your own research, that the custody point is going to somehow save us from sex offenders and people who are stealing cars right now in increased capacity. We need to keep level heads and resist the need to go feral with our criminal legal system. So, let's be clear, like, this custody point does not keep us safer. And I want to be, I also want to talk about this real quick. I want to make this argument about deterrence. So in 2016, the U.S. Department of Justice argued that harsher penalties are not a deterrent to crime. People understand that punishment is a thing. We know that. But the attitude is, you got to catch me first. This is why things like strategies like targeted policing work, that tend to be more effective. So, and if people are worried about getting caught and not worried about the punishment, doesn't it make sense that we continue to put so much energy into figuring out how to punish people? Keeping in mind, lots of folks who testified today in opposition to this policy admitted their own ability to cause harm. And to paraphrase, to sort of repurpose a Bryan Stevenson quote, you know, it's not about, do people deserve to be punished? It's really about, do we deserve to punish people? And that is why we have bodies like this. That's why we have the legislature. That's why we try to have policies and procedures that make sense. I'll close with this, just that, I'll close with this, just that too often we are focusing on one type of justice, which is punitive in nature. We are constantly talking about the punitive nature of justice, as if that keeps us safe alone. Real justice needs to be fair in its procedures. It needs to be equitable in how it distributes resources. It needs to hold people accountable, that is, like, give people a path to actually take responsibility for what they've done instead of just always forcing people into punishment scenarios. And whenever we do have people who are held accountable or punished, everything we do should be restorative in nature after that process, to bring people back to the community on purpose, in an intentional way, where we can build on top of the relationships that were damaged by the harm someone caused. Our situation that we're dealing with today, where people are screaming about sex offenders and carjackings and violent crime all going up, is a failure of the system that we have in place, not some soft-on-crime agenda that has weakened the guardrails. As a matter of fact, our system with its history of racialized oppression and how it's facilitated every racialized aggression against black people in our state, it has failed to reckon with the harm that it has caused and therefore proven itself ineffective at helping society reckon with the harm that we cause each other. This is not a politic, this need not be a political debate, and I welcome Senator Lemer, I welcome Bob Small, anyone to engage in a community dialogue that is balanced and really takes a look at this issue of the feral punishment that we are addicted to doling out through our criminal legal system. I think they make good points. But if we're actually going to provide the public safety that we want in our society, we have to take a step back and look at what it actually takes to repair harm. All in my comments there, deeply appreciate the opportunity. You guys are running a marathon today, and so, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We do have a question. Commissioner Larkin.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. You testified that there is no evidence that a custody point saves the public from crimes or enhances public safety. What evidence would you cite the commission to that shows that eliminating the custody point, reducing the length of prison sentences, or sending people, putting people on probation instead of putting them in prison for violent crimes, will save us from crime and protect the public?
So I referenced, I referenced an article from 2016 from the U.S. Department of Justice. If I knew how to use the chat, I would drop it in the chat. But I'm also, I'm also, you know, I'm also, I can look through the research that you all have provided a little bit closer, and I'm happy to have our organization to look into more, to expand this conversation. I'm here today to testify, you know, sort of anecdotally to what I know off the top of my head, but let me say this. In the way that you phrase the question, Judge Larkin, and I don't mean to be disrespectful for you for not referring to your title. The way you phrase the question, you said people in general, and maybe that's the way I did it too, but the reality is these generalizations are a problem when your own research points to the fact that there's a very specific population that would be impacted by this custody point as others have testified to today. And I just think that instead of these broad-sweeping generalizations that I think we're all guilty of, there's, it's clear who will be impacted by eliminating this custody point and who won't be. And if the majority of people who are impacted by this custody point being eliminated are people who are, who are not, you know, high-risk violent offenders, then, then I think that there's, I think it's responsible policy. I'll also add just one more point about an example that was given earlier. Being on probation and violating means you go back to prison. The fact that people are upset about how much prison time you get is astonishing to me because it's, I would argue, most of the people I've heard today who are arguing against this policy are folks who haven't sat in a cell and know how difficult that is.
Oh.
And, and I think that it's important to remember that if you get, if this policy passes, that you will still be punished. Now, if folks are upset and want to make sure that we punish people to an even deeper extent because you think that's effective, I would challenge that all day long. I don't think it's effective. And I think that the current, the current situation with the uptick in violence we have in our communities right now is a reflection of the failure of the system to keep us safe from that behavior as it is today. And so therefore, to write off opportunities to try to right the system, I think is a mistake.
Commissioner Larkin, looks like you have a follow-up question?
Just to follow up to those remarks, Mr. Terrell, were you present and able to hear the comments of the two victims who just testified before the commission?
I'm solo dad today, so I'm in a conflicting meeting, so I've been in and out, but I did hear, I've heard.
So I just have to ask you.
Commissioner Larkin.
Do you think that having strangers break into your house and put a gun to your daughter's head and threatened to kill her is less difficult than sitting in prison, having been convicted of a crime?
Judge Larkin, as a father, let me be clear. Anyone breaks into my house and puts a gun to my child's head, that is, that is the worst day of my life. And I have a problem with the framing of that question. We are all victims. We are all criminals. I heard a statistic once that the average American commits 70 felonies a day. Like, it is not, it is not healthy or wise to always put things in a victim-offender sort of dichotomy, if you will. The fact that, and to hold, and what I really get frustrated about is if you read Daniel Serret, if you read Bryan Stevenson, if you study how these, how these laws play out in community, you would realize that we do no service to victims by holding up and propping up policies and making arguments about punishing people as some sort of response to victims. I've been a victim of crime on multiple occasions, and I got no justice from the system that you're, that you're holding up and trying to argue in favor of harsher penalties. And I, and I just wish we would stop pretending that all the untested DNA kits that nobody mentioned today is somehow justice. I wish we'd stop pretending that the racial inequalities that we have in society is some kind of justice. I wish we'd stop pretending that an institution that was built pre-1965, before we were a democratic, multicultural society, is capable of providing justice, because it is not. And that is why the work of our generation, the work of the folks who've been in the streets for the last 18 months demanding justice for the first white cop to get locked up in the, in the history of 150 years of policing in this state for killing a black man, I think, like, the reason we're in this situation is because we want to talk about how punishing people is in service to victims. And you want to know what I think is in service to victims? I think that there needs to be, I think that there needs to be restorative practices that take into account what victims need. Longer sentences are just about the offender. We spend 90% of our resources on the offender, not the victim. So don't talk to me about victim, locking someone. When a man broke into my house on Christmas Day and robbed my house on Christmas Day, him sitting in a jail cell did nothing for me as a victim. And so I want to be clear that we need to have a much more mature conversation and stop pretending as if someone is innocent, if someone is guilty, and that is, then that is the whole nature of the situation. We have, we know this, but our politics get in the way, and we don't. Let me, let me close with this in response to your question. I'm a very interesting dude, because as much as I want to see this, this, this system be transformed completely, I also, during the uprising, had friends who were in the streets watching the third precinct burn, and had friends who were in the precinct defending their department. And I'm just tired of us playing these games, these false choices. You want to, you want to protect victims, then let's ask victims what they need. Nine times out of 10, yeah, you're going to get people who are angry and want vengeance and want to burn something down. That makes sense. Trust me, I know. But when you actually engage people and talk about what they need, and what would be helpful, they'd say, I and what would be helpful, they'd say, "I want to feel safe in my home again." If there was, I remember one time I witnessed an assault on a city bus, and in that moment, I would say, "I want to feel safe on the city bus again." For the people in Edina who are so pissed off this week about the carjackings and whatnot, they would say, "I want to feel safe in my driveway, in my vehicle, in my commute." And that is what we should be focusing on, is how to create that level of safety. And I guarantee you that the brother or sister or whoever who is getting ready to jack the next car is not paying attention to this hearing, does not care what a custody point is, and is going to do what they got to do to get through their day. So unless we start addressing their nerds, their needs, and the needs of the people in general who are potential victims, this conversation could have been handled in 30 minutes, and y'all could have been about y'all day. But instead, we got to spend the whole day debating something because of political interest. These are not the, this is not a conversation about the main thing, which is about public safety, which is about our system aligning itself to the needs of the people in general. And that is how I feel about the victim statement that you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell, for your testimony today. I think we need to move on to our next testifier. But thank you for coming.
You guys be well. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Sorry, Justin. Next, Madam Chair, we're going to try Reverend Dr. Heidi Vardeman and Reverend Frank Vardeman again.
If you're online, please go ahead. I think you might be on mute. We're not hearing you. Do you see a microphone icon for her or no? Can she call in? All right, so, Dr. Vardeman, I'm going to ask that you potentially get on the phone with our staff so that we can maybe have you call in your remarks, rather than going through your computer. Do you need the, should I give her the number to call again?
I think she's been in contact with our staff, but it is 651-296-0144.
Thanks for your patience. We'll get this worked out. And in the meantime, we'll take another testifier while we're waiting for that to get worked out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier is Amy Dietrich.
Ms. Dietrich, if you're online, please go ahead and unmute and testify.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. I would like to start by addressing Commissioner Tanya Honsi. You have said, quote, "We need to stop this, us versus them, when it comes to public safety," end quote. Who is "we"? Surely you can't be referring to the countless number of Minnesotans who are victims of crime, especially those of the recent home invasions, who are calling for accountability? Or the innocent people living in poor communities who disproportionately become victims of crime when criminals are released back into the community? As a former human rights commissioner, this concerns me. I'm equally concerned that six commissioners have voted yes to continue this effort to reduce sentencing guidelines without one of these victims on the panel. As far as I know, there's still not a victim on the panel. You could point the blame to Governor Walz, but with all due respect, that's what children do. They point the blame, they point to bad behavior to justify other bad behavior. Even San Francisco Mayor London said on Tuesday, after she respectfully met with crime victims, quote, "It's time for the reign of criminals who are destroying our city. It is time for it to come to an end," end quote. But here in Minnesota, it will not come to an end because none of this will change the minds of Commissioner Tanya Honsi and Commissioner Paul Shum, in my opinion. Governor Walz appointed commissioners, who, again, in my opinion, who would get his job done. And Commissioner Catherine Middlebrook, Commissioner Valerie Estrada, Commissioner Brooke Blakey, and Commissioner Kelly Lynn Mitchell will follow along, with all due respect, and I do mean with respect. Finally, if committing a crime while on probation would no longer count against you, what is the point of probation? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for commission members?
Yes, this is Commissioner Honsi. And I just want to address your question of who we are. And when I say who we are, us versus them and who we are, I'm also a victim of a crime. I'm also a victim of a violent sexual assault and years of child molestation. That doesn't mean that I want, I think that longer prison sentences is going to heal that trauma of mine. Over 80% of the women who are currently incarcerated and have been incarcerated are also victims of crime. And I would assume that it's the same for men. We are all victims, and we have all committed crimes. I don't know if you're familiar with the book, but we're all criminals. All of us. And we are all victims at some time in our life. When we start to build the community, that's when we can come together and real change can happen.
Commissioner Honsi, I just wanted to clarify. Did you have any question for our testifier?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any questions for, from commission members? All right, Ms. Dietrich, thank you so much for your testimony today. We will move on to the next testifier. Where are we at?
Well, we're close to the end of the original list. We have five more people, but the next one is Toner Earth, who has not completed registration. So if that person is in the room, please complete registration at the table to my right. Otherwise, call 651-296-0144 if you still wish to testify, to complete your registration. The next testifier's completed registration is Bill Ward.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and commission members. Like Mr. Terrell, for some reason, my video button isn't working. If it comes up during my presentation, I'll push it on. As most of you know, I am the state public defender for Minnesota. What that means is we represent, and I oversee an agency that represents individuals charged with offenses in all 87 counties in our state. And like Mr. Small, who I have nothing but great respect for, speaks on behalf of the county attorneys, I speak on behalf of our board, who represents nearly 150,000 people per year who are accused of crimes in this state. And, you know, just specifically, Commissioner Larkin, I'm neither rejecting the views of people's voices of fear, nor am I discounting folks who have been victims of crimes. And like others on this call, I too have been a victim of crime. But what I hear today, what I heard during the commission meetings, it just reminds me of testimony during the '90s, when we were concerned about increasing sentencing on crack cocaine and in dealing with issues regarding increased violence and crime. And what we did here and throughout the country is we indeed enacted draconian laws to deal with these issues because we were afraid. That's what we did. We were afraid. And right now, as all we've been talking about, we're experiencing basically a media frenzy relative to this increased violent crime and violent person crime. There's no doubt that it's gone up, but that conversation really shouldn't be dictating this discussion. Your own guideline, your comments talk about, under the guidelines, conviction offense is the primary factor, right? In criminal history, the secondary factor in dispositional decisions. We made up at some point, you know what? We should be using a custody status point. We've been using it ever since. And now that folks are saying, "Look, the data doesn't point to this being a benefit." And as a non-elected commission, thank goodness, who are looking at this issue, we're looking at doing something that basically probably shouldn't have been done in the first place. And what happened? I'm already hearing five times today, we look like we're soft on crime. That's directly from the '90s. We don't care, you know, the offenders are going scot-free, directly from the '90s. People, the word is out, Minnesota's the place to commit a crime. My gosh. You know, that's the hyperbole that happens when we are nervous and afraid because of what we see on television every day. The reality is, when we're talking about this, it's easy to take any position that says you're not soft on crime. That's easy. The difficulty is looking at the data that this commission looks at to determine what's appropriate in a given circumstance. So the question becomes for this commission, if, in fact, we want to tell a person, "We're mad at you, and we're going to have some retribution because you're on probation", then keep the darn points, right? You know, the half a point. But if you're really doing it for that purpose, you're only increasing the length of sentence for punishment purposes. But what happens now is that the person could go to prison where the half point pushes the person over the line from a presumptive stay of sentence. And that becomes basically retribution. We've learned, you know the data is true. Longer, harsher sentences do not deter crime. And there is categorically no data to prove otherwise. And commission, he said, "Well, where's the data to show you that it's been better?" I'm asking you, where's the data that shows longer sentences deter? And we talk about public safety. Let's remember, public safety involves people getting out of prison, people reintegrating back into society, having the means to come back, because they are coming out, unless they have a life sentence. The public safety is also taken into account by other sections that are available if they commit a new offense, as Mr. Terrell said. You violate your probation, committing a new offense, they're going to revoke the stay of execution. They just do, right? I mean, that's the case. So when people say there's no hammer, there is. If you commit a violent or an offense while you're on parole, you will be revoked and put back into prison. So let's not continue to say these soundbites like nothing happens to people, because it actually does. We're talking about, you know, people, as you know, and as people have talked about already, I have, sitting in front of you, your graphs is showing low-level convictions.
Ah, no, the one right here.
Low-level convictions. This is what we're talking about. Yet for whatever reason, because it sounds good and because it gets people's emotional ire up, we've gone into a rabbit hole about sex offenses and child predators and pornography and the rest of it, and first degree sentences. Let's focus on what we're really trying to do, is are we putting people in prison who don't need to go there? The other thing, too, is if you look at your numbers, and somebody's over talking as I'm talking here, you know, you know that the serious offenders are the fewest getting the custody status point. You just know that. And other guidelines, provisions, and statutes that increase sentences for repeated offenders, you have that under the guidelines now. Aggravated factors. You have the aggravated factors. Presumptive consecutive sentencing. We have that currently now. And let's just look at the grid itself. Look at the grid. We typically think in terms of the middle of the box, but it's not a durational departure if you go towards the top of the box. So if a judge has someone in front of him or her and says, "Hey, look, you were on my probation when you did this. You're going to prison because you're a criminal history score, and you know what? I'm giving you more than the top of the box." That's punishment. And it's allowed currently under our existing grid system. The other thing, too, and, you know, was talked about from the individual from Isaiah, you know, let's be honest. I mean, you're basically, you're punishing somebody three times, right? The custody status point triples the punishment. Your prior conviction's counted in the criminal history score, then the custody status is counted, and then the person faces consequences, provided in probation or supervised release. So we already have that, as it exists now. And the last thing I'm going to say, I'm running out of time, and Judge Small, I think the world of you, but we talk about fairness across the state. We all know that people in the 4th district and people in the 6th district, the average probation was five years, 60 months. In the other districts, it's up to 20 years. So you've got people who are on probation for a draconianly long time because of culture and sentences by judges in parts of the state. They literally are not reporting. They are simply on paper. And you think that that's fair, for that probation to be instituted in the first place? And now they're being punished again for something that could have happened 10 years earlier? That's the question. Is that fair? And I would suggest that it's not. I would ask you to look at your existing guidelines as to what you can do to aggravate someone's sentence right now. I would ask you to look at what the box allows you to do if you are given an executed sentence, and use the existing tools that you have. I'm absolutely 100% in support of this proposal. Yes.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Perfect timing. I finish at the same time.
Oh, okay. Sorry to interrupt, then. Is there anyone on the commission who has a question for Mr. Ward? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you so much for your testimony today.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I just want to assure anybody who's tracking my timekeeping skills that I'm not trying to give, I started the clock late on Mr. Ward. That was not intentional. I'm not trying to give certain people extra time, I assure you. Madam Chair, we're going to try the Reverend Vardeman's again. Hopefully, the third time will be a charm.
Does it work?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
I'm sorry, it took so long. Frank had to leave, so it's just me. I'm Heidi Vardeman. I'm the pastor of Peace Presbyterian Church in St. Louis Park. And I have some credibility in this matter. I've served as a prison chaplain in New York State at Greenhaven Correctional Facility. I served on the staff of a nonprofit in Florida, working with people coming out of prison and their families, and worked with sex offenders. And as one of the few women in the ministry back in the 1970s, early on, I was called to provide leadership to help the church deal with sex offenders in the clergy and other places of leadership within the church and to make sure that our places of worship are safe for children. I know a whole lot about dealing with sex offenders and how difficult it is to treat and deal with them. And I have counseled hundreds of victims of sex offenders. I, like Lisa Walker, who testified, my own daughter, while a student at the University of Minnesota, was sexually assaulted at gunpoint while she was getting into her car after having finished her shift waiting tables in a Minneapolis restaurant. But I've also served as a minister, working with many poor people of color. And I know what it's like for people like Latrell Snyder, who testified today, who get messed up with this point system and who really need flexibility. But for the past 26 years, I've served as a pastor in churches in Minnesota. And I know something about the public, the boots and shoes on the ground. My current congregation is made up of modest suburban white people, lots of teachers and retired teachers. And the congregation is deeply concerned about public safety and the well-being of children. And it has asked me to commend you for your work and to support all of the provisions in your proposal. Over the past year, our church has been studying about racism in our society and found ourselves dealing with issues of public safety and incarceration. We were shocked to learn that while the USA has 5% of the world's population, we have 25% of the world's incarcerated people. We have learned that longer sentences do not produce less crime, but effective treatment, community support, and flexibility in sentencing do work. And I am so grateful that Minnesota has a more reasonable incarceration rate than other states and proud that Minnesota has led the way. Thank you for your work. And we just, members of the public here, representative of my country, we support you in your policy changes, especially having to do with this point system, the custody status. We want effective, not necessarily punitive governmental policy to reduce crime, not necessarily just to keep people locked up for longer than any other developed nation, country in the world. So thank you for all the time that you have put into this. And please know, there are many who really appreciate what you have done. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Do we have any questions from the commission? All right, seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to the next testifier.
Madam Chair, the next testifier is Paulette Orlikie.
Good afternoon. This is Paulette Orlikie. I'm a community member, citizen, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I do not support reduced sentences for criminals or repeat criminals. Our society needs to-- Our society needs to be safe. Many people today that testified made that point, I agree with them. There are too many criminals not being appropriately sentenced for the crimes they commit, and sentencing, as it is for certain offenses, is not substantial enough to begin with. I have personal information about a sentence that is in place now, sentencing guideline that's in place now for drunk-driving offenders. The first offense drunk driver who kills only serves two and two-thirds years for criminal vehicular homicide. My daughter's killer will be out of prison in one and a half weeks, only serving two and two-thirds years. This sentence is unacceptable and unjust for the crime that was committed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from the commission? All right, so hearing none, we'll move on to the next testifier.
Madam Chair, the next testifier is Minister Janay Bates.
Hello, hello. Dear Madam Chair and members of the Minnesota Sentencing Guideline Commission, I am Minister Janay Bates, and I serve as Associate Minister at Camper Memorial United Methodist Church in St. Paul. I'm also the Communications Director for Isaiah, and I have loved ones, community members, and neighbors who are incarcerated, formally incarcerated, and/or on some sort of state-sanctioned surveillance. And I personally am also the survivor of sexual violence from my adolescence. I am here to speak in support of a just proposal to remove custody status points from criminal history scores. One reason is certainly what others have named, that there is already in place a provision that adds additional repercussions to additional offenses. The current policy serves as a form of cruel, extra, overt, and perpetual punishment that is not grounded in restoration, rehabilitation, correction, or even prevention, as there is little to no signs that this is a strong deterrent to offense. But mostly, I support this measure because it is the right thing to do in order to create the safe communities that our communities need. I've heard so much fear and punishment-based rhetoric today that has removed the humanity from a bunch of people who, you know, are being judged by the biggest mistakes they've ever made. There is a popular scripture that speaks about our human inclination to want to focus on the proverbial spec in someone else's eye while we neglect the log in our own. Knowing that one of the strongest predictors of going to prison are things like community, community-based standardized test scores, and one of the biggest predictors of low test scores are looking at communities' proximity to poverty, and the greatest correlation to that is often the color of their skin, the willingness for big businesses to underpay them or not employ them, to deny health care and treatment, for slum lords to extract their small resources, and for corporate developers to exploit their families and communities, and this has happened for generations. And yet, we don't have a point system that takes into consideration these factors and the ways in which there have been collective failures on many levels that have resulted in our over-incarcerating, our over-incarcerating of all communities, especially communities of color, keeping all of us unsafe. This is a perpetual and cyclical problem that we have failed to address, and the policy proposal today is a step in the right direction. A focus on punishment has never served any of us. When someone creates harm or an offense in community, our priority, if we truly care about public safety, rehabilitation, or correction, our focus should be on redemption and restoration. Punishment, and certainly not the excessive punishment that is in the current custody status point policy, it doesn't do that. We can't continue to kick people when they're down while shouting at them to pull themselves up. We need to be a true example of what we are calling for those who are incarcerated or on probation to do and be. We don't want those incarcerated or on probation to exploit others, we shouldn't exploit them. We want them to be caring and empathetic and merciful, we need to offer that as well. 536 empty prison beds are 536 lives given an opportunity to be with their families, 536 people able to work, able to give back to community, able to live lives that build whole families, whole neighborhoods, whole communities. We want to talk about corrections. Let's talk about correcting ourselves first, as we talk about correcting others. And again, this policy is a step toward that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commission member have a question? All right, seeing none, let's, thank you so much for your testimony today, we'll move on to the next testifier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier, actually, the last testifier, just a couple of announcements, if I may, Madam Chair. One is the, you're now free to exit out of any door you wish, the business at the south side of the Capitol has been cleared up. There's one more testifier who testified in advance of the hearing, then there are two additional people who testified in this room today, who signed up in this room today to testify. I think I may have said testified instead of signed up before. And then, apparently, two more people have signed up online during the meeting to testify. So, it sounds like we have five more people to testify. So, the next testifier in advance is Bo Rara.
Can you hear me okay?
Can you say that again?
Can you hear me all right?
Not very well. Do you have a speaker?
Can you hear me better now?
That's a little bit better, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bo Rara, I'm the Youth Restorative Justice Initiative Lead at the Legal Rights Center. And on behalf of the Legal Rights Center, I'm here today to support the commission's recommendation to remove the custody status point from calculating a person's criminal history score. This recommendation has critical implications for racial equity in our criminal legal system, and will have a deeply positive impact on the lives of people across Minnesota. For example, I've seen someone go to prison for stealing coats from a department store rather than receiving probation because of a single point. Counting the fact someone is in jail on conditional release, on probation, in prison, or on supervised release against them a second time does nothing to advance community safety, and fundamentally undermines efforts to restore people in relationship and in community. And like Representative Mariani said earlier, Minnesota led the nation in 1978 when our legislature established the country's first sentencing guideline commission. The commission's very purpose as a group of 11 individuals is to establish and maintain the rules that judges must follow in felony sentencing. This is critical because of the glaring racial inequities in both sentencing and supervised release or parole locally and across the country. The United States followed suit to create a sentencing commission at the federal level in 1984 with bipartisan support. Despite these efforts, deep racial disparities persist today at the sentencing decision point and at every decision point in the criminal legal system. Minnesota has the fourth highest disparity in incarceration rates between black and white people. In Minneapolis, we know that black people are arrested at 8.7 times the rate of their white peers, and Native American people are arrested at 8.6 times the rate of their white peers for low-level offenses. It is important to note that research has repeatedly demonstrated, as others have said today, that these hugely disparate arrest rates cannot be explained by differences in behavior. We also know that racial disparities compound every contact with the criminal legal system and culminate in a disparity at the point of who is more likely to have a custody status point count against them in their criminal history score. For example, judges deny bail to black people 25% more often than they do to white people, and bail is set higher for black people than it is for white people, and this comes from the Minneapolis Foundation. Many of the reasons laid forth by the commission to remove the custody status point from calculating a person's criminal history score are in alignment with the bipartisan values that established the commission. The commission seeks to reduce excessive or duplicative punishment, racial disparities, and punishment that does not actually increase public safety. If we know about racial inequity and do nothing to reduce the systems that compound those inequities, we perpetuate injustice in our community. We hope the sentencing guideline commission will stand strong in its convictions to remove the custody status point in favor of decarceration and advancing racial equity in solidarity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission have a question? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for your testimony. Before we move on, we have, like we said, we have a couple of people who have signed up since prior to the meeting, and I wanted to just put the last call out in case there's anyone else out there who's interested in being added to the list to testify. So, if you're in the room and you, I think everybody that's in the room that wants to testify has already signed up. If you haven't, please approach our staff person over here and sign up ahead of time. If you're listening remotely and you've decided that you would like to testify, please register by emailing sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us or calling 651-296-0144. And remind me what they need, what information they need in order to register, please, Mr. Wrights.
Name, address.
You need your name, address, phone number, and any affiliation that you have with respect to your testimony today.
So, we'll, so anyone who's online who's interested in adding your name to the list of testifiers, while we were taking the last few testifiers, this is your last call to do that, otherwise, we will conclude with the list that we have, and I'd like you to call the next testifier. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier is Maurice Ward in person.
First, I'd like to say I'm the host of I Got Something to Say Podcast, that's I got something, S-O-M-T-H-A-N-G, T-A-S-A-Y, and we're in support of you guys removing the custody point. I first apologize for coming here because I don't have any statistical data, but I do have anecdotal experience for those who don't have their Webster's, it's a personal experience with this custody point, and I like to bring that to you guys. I was convicted of a crime in 2010, and prior, during my conviction, my public defender told me that I didn't have any criminal history points, which I didn't. And when I went to sentencing, I was sentenced and also given a custody point, which I couldn't figure out why. But prior to that, I had three DUIs, never total, never turned it into a felony, but they were gross misdemeanors, but they were custody points, they gave me one custody point, which aggravated my sentence, and committed me to prison for a longer time. The problem I have with that is the fact that the custody point was not a same or similar crime, it was something totally different for what I committed, which made no sense to me. Now, when you guys looking at it, the funniest thing I find in this room is that the people who are making decisions are indirect, they have no direct, they have an indirect effect or indirect relationship to what directly affects the individuals who are receiving the punishment. So, nobody looks like me in this room, and yet, the people who are making decisions, they don't look like me at all. So, I just think that it's a disconnect between the actual, when you start talking, like we had individuals coming in talking about sex offenses and things like that, and they go from one spectrum to the next. The, what you have to keep in mind is that it should make sense. You know, if you're going to give somebody an enhanced score, it should be a same or similar crime, which makes sense at the end, right? If he's continued to commit the same crime, then it should be aggravated, but why are you utilizing it for something like a DUI? And that's when you get into the people who have these low-level offenses, right? The gentleman talked about, you know, not coming in on time, or, you know, these minor offenses that then turn into something criminal, makes no sense to me. So, I do apologize, I always wanted to know who was making the decisions when it came to sentencing guidelines. I'm glad I had the opportunity to sit in the room, I'm sorry, there's not a lot more individuals like myself, but I will be podcasting this on my podcast, I'm sure we would get, we would start getting more people coming in here to talk to you. I thank you.
I really thank you for sharing your story and coming in today. Does anyone have a question? Commissioner Chanel?
Thank you, Mr. Ward, for your testimony. I just want to ask you a question. One of the purposes of the Guidelines Commission is to create a rational system, rational kind of, I think implying at some level, understandable.
Yes, sir.
From your experience, is that accomplished through, with the custody status point?
No, it makes, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, because it just seems like it's being utilized to further punish individuals. And you have, my question has always been about the criminal justice system, which we call the criminal justice system, is when does a punishment stop? It just seems like we have all these, these areas of punishment and no, you know, so, no, I don't think it, to answer your question, I don't think it helps at all, because it's something that's placed on at the end, and nobody really knows about it, and it's, to me, it's not, it's serving a purpose only for punishment, not for any, not helping anybody do anything, it just aggravates the individual sentencing more. So, no, it does, to me, doesn't, it did not, does not serve a purpose at all. Thank you for the question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next testifier.
The last in-person testifier is Kevin Hill.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, as well as the rest of the commissioners. First of all, I do work for the Carver County Attorney's Office, I didn't write that, I didn't see that line, but I'm not here in that capacity today, I'm just speaking off my own experience. This is an area that's kind of interested me in the last couple of years, I'm newer in my career, so I'm not as ingrained as some of my colleagues might be, and I'm definitely open to changes as they've presented themselves. And something that's, you know, as this has evolved since the changes in 2019, what I've noticed is, we've already effectively eliminated custody status for severity level one and severity level two, as well as severity level one, or D1 and D2, through the change to the half point. With there not being anything for it to be added to, my assumption has been that that then gets effectively dropped off. Additionally, with the modifications made in 2019, there is the ability to waive custody status for all offenses for severity level seven or D7 and below, as long as you meet the criteria that's laid out in the guidelines. Beyond that, even if you don't meet that criteria, you can essentially have your custody status waived by getting a departure, a dispositional departure, if you are able to prove that the circumstances warrant it, when you are particularly amenable to treatment and probation. And those are the people who are most deserving of being on probation, because they have shown themselves that they will do what it takes to be successful on probation, to make it so that whoever their probation agents are, aren't expending an inordinate amount of their time checking in on these individuals, because they are the best suited to make it through probation successfully. So, what the decision in front of the commission is really deciding is for the severity levels of seven through three, which, those aren't just nonviolent offenses, second-degree assault is included, assault on an unborn child, CVO with substantial bodily harm, arson in the second degree, criminal abuse of a vulnerable adult with substantial bodily harm, unauthorized possession or use of explosives, the list goes on. When you look at the grid itself, the custody status really only matters at that dividing line, when you get to severity level seven and below, in terms of whether someone earns a presumptive stay or a presumptive commit. And that's because, once you get into the presumptive commitment, the grid cells, as you move up in higher criminal history, overlap. So, judges already have the discretion of sentencing within the grid. So, if someone is going to be a presumptive commitment regardless of the custody status point, a judge can take that into consideration by either sentencing at the low end of the box or the high end. a judge can take that into consideration by either sentencing at the low end of the box or the high end of the box. Really, what we're talking about is those offenders that are pushed in to a presumptive commitment because of their custody status point. I don't have data on the entire state of Minnesota, but based on a project I had done before, I do have the sentencing data from Carver County, at least from 2016, sorry, 2016 through 2019. And I ran the numbers, and what I found was that of those offenders, there were 99 that were sentenced with no custody status designation. Of those 99, 13 were, 13 people have been convicted of new felony offenses. In contrast, 107 were sentenced with a custody status designation. And of those, 47 were convicted of subsequent felonies. That's a difference of 13% for those without custody status versus 43% for those with the custody status. Of those people, only five total offenders were only, were essentially pushed in to a presumptive commitment because of their custody status point. Two of those five have new pending or, either new pending offenses or new felony convictions, even after their release from prison. 23%, or 23 people were pushed in based on their criminal history, or based on their custody status point that received dispositional departures. 11 of those 20 have new felony convictions or are in warrant status with pending new felonies.
Mr. Hill, I'll just have to ask you to wrap up because you've reached the end of your time.
That, that's the biggest point that I had. I thank you for your time. I apologize for signing up late. I, this is the first time I've ever testified in front of a committee, so I didn't know what the process was. I just kind of showed up and wasn't sure if I was going to speak at all. So thank you.
Well, hopefully it won't be your last. We do appreciate participation. It looks like we have a question from Commissioner Larkin.
And I appreciate your testimony. I'm just not clear. Do you support or oppose the proposal?
I, I oppose Judge Larkin. I think what this really does is just gives away the discretion of the judiciary to really make the decisions. And in looking at it, you know, there's a statistically higher, at least based on what I was able to get, there's a, there's a statistically different level of people committing offenses that are already on probation. And I think that that is a basis to justify treating those people differently. They have access to services that you and I, who are not on probation, wouldn't already have, and we have, they have an extra impetus to remain law-abiding. So I think that that's a reason to treat them differently.
It's quick.
Commissioner Larkin.
And I ask this because you're somebody who deals with this, and you've obviously taken some time on your own to look at your numbers and to see how things play out. Do you think it would be wise, based on your experience and what you've heard today, for this commission to look at an option where we would say, okay, we're going to take the criminal history point away for some people, those people who would only get a half point anyway. But for higher-level offenses or people with longer histories, we should keep it in place. I mean, should we be more discerning in our approach instead of all or nothing?
I think if, if that were the alternative, I think that, I think custody status is definitely warranted to play some part. I don't really know. I would have to do a lot more in terms of, you know, who statistically is the most likely to reoffend based on custody status? Is it people who are on custody status for higher-level offenses versus lower-level offenses? Because I think that's what the commission is looking for, is some sort of data to justify why this matters beyond just kind of the instinctive, someone that's on probation should deserve some sort of extra punishment.
Any other questions? Commissioner Estrada.
Thank you for the statistics for your county. I'm just wondering if you had an opportunity to look at the heat graphs that were provided to the, to this commission in regards to who is getting this custody status point? I know you mentioned, you know, there were several people who reoffended with new felonies. Is there, do you have the anecdote or the data of what those felonies were that they were offended with? Are we looking at violent crimes here as reoffenses? Are we looking at drugs? Are we looking at property crimes? What does that look like is my first question. And my second question would be, as a prosecutor, how often are you using the additional tools that are there in the guidelines, such as the aggravating factors that have been alluded to before and the severe repeat violent offenders modifications?
So in regards to your first question, is that what their, essentially what their recidivating offense was?
Yes.
I, I didn't specifically, I guess I didn't formulate what it would be statistically. I mean, my kind of offhand recollection is it's primarily kind of, I'd say level three, four offenses, a lot of subsequent felony domestics or order-for-protection-type violations, the theft above 5,000 or subsequent thefts, things like that. It, it wasn't a lot of, you know, fifth-degree controlled substance crimes. At the same time, it wasn't as if they were a lot of first-degree assaults. That being said, Carver County also doesn't have a lot of violent crimes, so there's just not a lot of that to begin with. And I've completely forgotten what your second question was. Oh, whether we use the enhancements. That kind of dovetails right in what I just said. We don't have a lot of significant crime. So I can't speak with any authority. There are certainly people that qualify as habitual offenders, violent offenders, that I've filed motions on and essentially used that as a means of plea bargaining to get a middle-of-the-box sanction. It's, it's rare that we come into a situation where that's actually an issue.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for your testimony and waiting, waiting, I know you've been here all day, so thank you for waiting through all of the testimony.
Thank you. I was late.
And we'll take call the next person.
We're apparently down to one online testifier. Madam Chair, it's Jean Day.
Okay. Jean Day, if you're there if you can hear.
Yes, hopefully it will continue working for a little bit here.
It is working.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. So it appears from a write-up in the St. Paul paper that the reason for the biggest change is to clear jail cells and budgeting issues. My concern is there's no talk whatsoever about rehabilitation of these multiple felons. Without, pray, excuse me, without, what pray tell is being done to keep them to a point through local programs to break an addiction or to find them a skill for employment. In lieu of a budget for that, anything less is, just a moment, is less is mocking to the taxpayers that pay the entire line of payroll for those that are supposed to keep our streets, homes, and individuals safe. From police to judges to Attorney General, the whole system is moot with your stance. While concentrating on a budget and releasing those recently caught multiple felons, because we are not talking about single felons, these people have not accidentally become a second offender. They have made a decision to do that. They need to pay for the next actions. Maybe the state has cleared of more costs, but being irreparable, but doing irreparable harm mentally, financially, and/or physically, you are leaving the state of Minnesota and its board of sentencing guideline members responsible for the angst of those harmed or killed. Other than release them, you have done nothing to protect the citizens. This is totally irresponsible, given this is not a first-time offense person you were talking about, but multiple. And I am what would, one would call a liberal or independent. I don't need to be a conservative to be sick and tired of the catch-and-release Minnesota is becoming known for. Those you release appear to be becoming more brazen, and they know that there's no consequences to worry about. This lessening of sentencing is an.
Oh, it seems like we've lost your audio. Are you still there?
And myself for adhering to laws. I have never been a criminal, as everybody's saying, everyone's a criminal. I can attest for the fact, I have always been law-abiding. Please do not continue with lowering sentences for those who have not changed their lifestyles and will become repeat offenders once again, as they have already proven to be. We have far too many lenient laws already. You are tying the hands of the police that capture these folks, put their lives on the line, only to watch them walk right out the door. How horrific for the moral must be to know that one has risked their life to bring in a lawbreaker, only to see the judicial system is becoming so flawed, it's worthless. I've been very proud of Minnesota, but this type is irresponsible action and shameful at the least. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question from the commission? Okay, seen none. Thank you so much for your testimony today. I think we have one more testifier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt Majowski. Hello, Matt Majowski here. Thank you, Madam Chair and commission members. You hear me well enough?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm here, I'm a probation officer with Dakota County. I've been with Dakota County since 1997 and in the adult probation department. And it did not take me too long to gain a liking, affinity towards the sentencing guideline. It's always been a specialty of mine. I enjoy working with the sentencing guidelines and researching criminal history, and I'm a trainer for our department in that, in that area. I am here to speak in favor of the proposal for the removal of the custody status from the criminal history score, again, speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of my department. The director of the adult probation department, Dakota County Adult Probation Department, has expressed, and I do have an email for, that says that, in favor of this same proposal. It bothers me hearing the fear and scare tactics that have been, you know, propounded here concerning how we are soft on crime, that sort of thing. And as has been said by others, there are certain protections built into the guidelines, built into statutes for dealing with people who have committed severe violent crimes, who have committed severe crimes while on supervision. But to lump people who are on supervised release for a violent crime with somebody who is on probation to the court for a gross misdemeanor, check forgery, is, does not seem fair or equitable. One example that was given by the representative of the county attorneys was the person who committed a severe drug offense, was given 105 months, prined sentence, and committed the same offense while on supervised release. And as instance, a custody status would really mean nothing, getting a custody status point, because the presumptive sentence for that crime would be adding a 75-month consecutive sentence to the one they were serving. So the custody status point was irrelevant. And as been spoken by others, the severe violent offense modifications that have been made can add up to two years to somebody who commits a subsequent severe violent offense. So it bothers me that there continues to be misunderstanding around this issue. There certainly are consequences for repeat offending, especially the violent and more severe offenses while on some type of supervision that is already there. If for some reason the commission is not approved to eliminate the custody status point, I would speak in favor of the option of it being considered an aggravating factor where the sentence would be increased by no more than the one point for non-sex offense and up to two points for the sex offense sentences. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. We have a question for you. Commissioner Larkin.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments this afternoon. Regarding the alternative you mentioned of making the custody status an aggravating factor, are you aware that if we do that, it wouldn't be automatic? In other words, because it would be an aggravating factor, there might have to be a separate jury trial to determine whether or not that should be imposed as an additional consequence? Much like the aggravating factor that people have mentioned having to do with someone who is on probation for a sex offense and then commits another sex offense. Those are aggravating factors that require an additional judicial proceeding.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of that, and I know that that may add additional, you know, burden to the judiciary and to even people in, probation officers at all. I, I feel that, that of course can be used as a negotiating tactic as well as, since, you know, most of these cases don't go to trial anyway and are settled. So I think that would be something that prosecutors would be using to, you know, you know, in, in that area. But, but yes, I, I, I understand that and think that that may satisfy some people who are very against eliminating custody status altogether.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, seen none. Thank you so much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else? Are we done?
Madam Chair, that concludes the testimony.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out. That concludes today's business of the public hearing. Just want to let you all know, the record of this public hearing will be, will remain open for five calendar days after today through December 21st, 2021. During that time, we will receive additional written comments. So if you have, if you have not already submitted a comment and you desire to do so, please submit that to the commission's email address at sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us. The public hearing is adjourned. We will now take a 10-minute break before we begin our regular December commission meeting. For those of you who are attending the hearing, feel free to remain online or in person if you wish to also view the, the commission's meeting. So we'll be adjourned. It's now 4:12. We'll restart up at 4:22. Thank you.